People, please take your seats. We're going to commence our hearing. We are going to have a -- we do have a sign-up sheet over on the bench over there, the table, so anyone who wants to speak tonight, we're asking you to sign up. And we will call you in the order in which people are signed up unless you decide not So as you know, can you hear me? Is this on?
It's on.
Okay. This is our -- this is our -- well, this is our first session dealing with traffic exclusively. So as you know, if you've come to prior sessions of these hearings, we've dealt with the site characteristics, site plan, aspects, drainage, storm water, and we're going to continue some of those at our meeting next week. But tonight, we're devoting exclusively to the subject of traffic. So if you came to talk about storm water, or hazardous materials, or anything else, this is not your night. We do want to hear from you on your thoughts about traffic. The game plan tonight, we're starting at seven. We're going to try to wrap up tonight's session at around 10:00. We're going to allow approximately an hour or less, if the applicant needs less, to present information about traffic for this site and the studies that have been done. In that time, we'll also have our person who's peer-reviewed traffic for us speak as well. Then I think we'll have perhaps a half hour, if needed, for questions from the planning board. So at approximately 8:30, it's our intention to open this up for public comment. And unlike our prior sessions, I'm not going to restrict comments initially to questions. I think we're going to go right to comments. If you have a question, that's fine, but we're going to accept all public input at this point. If we're not able to finish this at 10:00 tonight, and there are people who haven't had a chance to speak and still want to speak, then we're going to continue the session along with the other topics at our meeting next week on Wednesday. And then there's one more hearing, or our regular meeting of the planning board is on February 10th, so if there's any spill over to the 10th, that'll happen as well. But it's my hope that we will conclude these hearings at the latest next week. So that's the game plan. I would ask people, when you get to your time to talk, we know there's a lot of interest in this project, but it does not help to hear the same thing over and over. So try to bring your comments to a focus of what you have that's different, that people before you have not already said. We do pay attention. So with that, I'd like to ask if we could have a motion to waive the reading of the public notice.
So we can second.
It's been moved in seconds. No one in favor? Chair votes in favor, motion passes. Hearing is now in order, and we're going to ask the applicant if they would like to come up and begin their presentation. And please, everybody, whether the applicant or any other speaker, we're going to need you to come up to the microphone, not just so that we can hear you, but there are people who are watching this on BevCam, and they cannot hear anything that is not spoken into a microphone. Thank you. Much better. So I thank you, members. My name is Steve Cohen from CEA, the applicant in the matter. It's no secret that traffic remains the biggest concern that is troubling many of our neighbors. And we understand that they're fearful, that their neighborhood may be harmed by the traffic impacts here, not only from our project, but from the interchange improvements in general. And from their perspective, for many of them, this is really a big, threatening, unknown. And we are here tonight to demonstrate that the traffic impact of the project is not an unknown, and it will not be anything like what our neighbors fear. So probably no project in the history of the city of Beverly has ever been studied as carefully and as thoroughly as this project, certainly the traffic elements, but other elements as well. Traffic has been studied by Jacobs, the city's traffic engineer, and by the ultra-conservative traffic engineers of Mass Department of Transportation. And new interchange was designed, in part, with this project in mind, to provide sufficient capacity so that the traffic associated with this project could be handled safely and efficiently. The traffic impact has been studied by Ron Mueller of RMA, you know, my very conservative traffic engineer. It's been studied by TEC, the traffic engineer engaged by the city to review the matter. And finally, it has been examined and studied by the Beverly Parking and Traffic Commission. All of these experts are professional engineers, and they're all committed to making sure that they understand, and you understand, and we all understand, the future impact of the traffic associated with this project. So again, we understand and we respect the fear that so many of our neighbors have so eloquently expressed in other forums and letters, and I imagine we'll hear some tonight. But at this point, fear must yield to facts and analysis. And so tonight, we will hear from two of the experts, the traffic engineers, who have examined the traffic impacts. Thanks. And you'll hear from these experts that the traffic impact of the project is on local roadways and on the city is relatively modest. Yeah, I'm sorry. You'll hear that the impact is relatively modest, and I think that you will hear, and I hope my neighbors will hear, that the impact is not going to be what they fear. So before I introduce a traffic consultant, there are just a couple of things that I want to go through. First of all, just to understand the process by which the traffic impact has been studied, and the public process as well. It starts when I hire Ron Mueller of RMA, who's a top-notch guy in the field, to examine the traffic impacts here. He did a preliminary study. We then reviewed with the planning director. And the planning director looked at our study initially and said, "Well, you know, you've just looked at the immediate vicinity of your project. We would like you to take a look at a broader field." And so we expanded, at his request, we expanded the scope of the study from Dodge Street in the north down to Essex Street in the south. So it's a pretty expansive study. We prepared that study. This is the study that was prepared. It's substantial, it's weighty, it's comprehensive. The next step is the city hired its own engineer, TEC, to examine the project, the traffic impacts, and to review the traffic study that our engineer put together. And then there began an iterative process in which TEC would make comments on that traffic study. Our traffic engineer would respond to the comments. More comments would be made by TEC, more responses. Process went back and forth for a couple of months, until ultimately, the city's traffic consultant, TEC, was satisfied that her issues and questions were addressed, and ultimately, she concurred with the traffic analysis. So that was the process. Now, you'll hear from our traffic consultant about the actual traffic impacts. But as part of that review process, comments were also made about the site plan itself, and therefore, as part of that process, in response to the TEC comments, we made a number of revisions in the site plan. First of all, she expressed concern about certain congestion around the bank building, and so we added a bypass lane to the bank building to avoid that potential congestion. Next, she pointed out that there wasn't pedestrian access from Sawyer Road into the project, and so we added a sidewalk along the side of the Whole Foods building in order to provide that access. In addition, there are several minor changes, some signage. We adjusted the curb radius up on Brimble. Access to the service area was improved and clarified, certain one-way and two-way areas were clarified, a number of small changes. But the most significant change that came out of the review process was to add an access on Sawyer Road. And the general rationale for that, and this arose not only from comments from TEC, but also arose in our discussions with MassDOT, the engineers at MassDOT, the general rationale is to distribute the traffic in as many different directions as possible, and to minimize the potential for an inordinate impact in any one direction. And, you know, when we explored that option initially and ran our numbers, we found that in fact, it was very effective in reducing the traffic impact on the Connector Road and on Brimble Avenue by distributing it a third way to Sawyer as well. And most notably, I would point out that the traffic exiting the project onto the Connector Road was actually reduced by 40 percent by adding an exit on Sawyer Road. So those were the planned changes that grew out of this process. The process ordinarily culminates with a study of mitigation. And in this case, the traffic engineers felt that we were going to have an impact, a relatively small impact, at a couple of problematic intersections, for the most part, at the northern and southern extremes of Brimble Avenue. After that was raised, we proposed to contribute our fair share to the cost to mitigate at those sensitive locations. Costs were calculated. We calculated our fair share contribution and proposed a particular contribution. And again, on behalf of the city, TEC evaluated that and concluded that the costs and the fair share were reasonable and concurred the amount of mitigation proposed. However, that was just the beginning of the conversation, and the matter of mitigation is still being discussed with parking and traffic and with the city administration. So that won't be resolved for you tonight, but you'll hear more about that next time, by which time I hope that there will be a resolution. I guess I should mention, one other thing talking about process, is that ultimately, this project, if it is approved by the city, will need a curb cut permit from the state. And this is an ordinary thing that is required when you seek access to a state road. And it's a standard practice to get all the local permits first, and then go to the state for the curb cut permit. They want to know that you have your local approvals before they address their curb cut. We believe that we'll get the necessary curb cuts that we seek. In the highly unlikely event that they alter the access in any way, we'll be back to the city, we'll be back to parking and traffic, we'll be back to the planning board to present any revisions that may have been made at the state level. Now, one other subject related to traffic, but not entirely, I need to raise tonight, and that relates to our most important neighbor, Northridge Homes. We've become aware in the last few days, you know, that some of the folks at Northridge have some concerns about this, traffic-related and otherwise. They are very important to us, as we've mentioned in previous hearings. I mean, we have lots of neighbors in the neighborhood, but we have only one neighbor that's our actual butter, and we feel a special responsibility to try to address any of their concerns and to mitigate any impacts that we may have upon them. So you've heard previously at earlier hearings that we've addressed some drainage issues that they had. In fact, you know, they drain onto our site, and we've had to alter our drainage design in order to accommodate their storm water. I think you might also recall that much of Northridge, like our site, was built on a landfill. And like our site, you know, they have potential issues with landfill gas. And part of what we're doing in our project is to provide for monitoring of landfill gas that affects their property as well as affecting ours. That you've heard before. In addition, I want to tell you that we have a long, common property line. We're proposing to put a fence along that property line because they were concerned with security and didn't want to have people going through our property onto theirs. There are also some gaps. It's pretty heavily treed along the property line, but there is, you know, one substantial gap. And we're proposing to provide screening there, probably a number of trees, but possibly trees and a fence, and we'll work with the Northridge Board to figure out exactly what they preferred there. They've expressed some concerns about traffic volumes on Sawyer Road as it passes in front of their property. And I can tell you, generally speaking, that the impact of the traffic on Sawyer there is very small. In the morning peak hour, it's negligible. You virtually had no traffic at all. In the PM peak hour, however, our studies, and by the way, our calculation is about 15 percent of our traffic will be using Sawyer to approach and exit the project. That 15 percent in the evening peak hour works out to about one car every two minutes or so in each direction. So again, it's a very modest impact. And then again, on the weekends, and it's the weekends when this project will experience the most traffic, on the weekends, there will be a car roughly every one and a half minutes in each direction, be passing in front of Northridge. So the impact, very, very modest. But the most critical issue that has been raised by our neighbors at Northridge is the potential impact on what is known at Northridge as the K Building. And can you see the K Building there? Yeah, actually, we highlighted it there so you could see it more heavily. Actually, you know, all of the buildings on Northridge are actually on the other side of their driveway, except for the K Building, which is on the side of their road, which is closest to us. That building is only five feet from the property line. Now, of course, that doesn't conform to zoning. Zoning actually requires a setback of at least 20 feet in a location like that. But there's a long history about how Northridge got built, and in fact, at that time, the city actually opposed the construction of Northridge, but the city was trumped by the state, and when the dust settled, there was a building only five feet from the property line. So while it's non-conforming and is unduly close to the property line, nevertheless, you know, we felt there's, I think, four apartments there, four units there, and, you know, we felt that we needed to somehow minimize the impact on those folks. So the first thing we did is when we designed the Whole Foods building, you know, initially, we thought that we would want to put the loading docks buried in the corner back there. From our perspective, that would have been the ideal place, but that would have put them close to the K Building. So we redesigned the building and pushed them to the other side of the building to get them as far away from the K Building as possible. Then there's the location of the building itself. Now, we are subject to a 20-foot setback in that location, which is to say that we can build, you know, our building 20 feet from the property line. Well, you know, clearly with the K Building right there, that would not have been desirable. It would not have been ideal. So we pushed, you know, the Whole Foods building as far away from the K Building as we could. So again, the required setback is 20 feet. We actually placed the Whole Foods building 56 feet away from the property line. So I mean, it's a contrast on the two sides. We're both subject to a 20-foot setback, but the K Building is five feet from the property line. We're 56 feet from the property line. And then finally, what we did was provide a buffer on our side of the property line. We start with a fence on the property line itself, as tall as we can make it. Actually, this is a good study of the situation. That's the K Building over on the left. You know, that's the Whole Foods building over on the right, and you can see that the K Building is actually going to be taller than the Whole Foods building. Then right on the property line is the fence. It's drawn as an eight-foot fence. And then on the other side of that fence, there's a 10-foot buffer. And in that buffer area, we plan to plant Leyland cypresses. It's a fast-growing evergreen tree. We can plant them at about 12 to 14 feet initially, but they grow three to five feet per year. They are the ideal tree for screening in a location like this.
What does this have to do with parking?
Can I continue? Okay, well, I'll try to finish it up, because as I say, they have expressed concerns about the parking and traffic, and, you know, I thought if we're going to address the issue of Northridge, we should do it comprehensively. But we'll finish this up now. So the tree is drawn there at about 20, 25 feet. It will provide a great screen. They will not be able to see the cars, as you can see, drawn there. And, you know, overall, right now, the residents of that building are looking out over Sawyer Road and the traffic coming down from 128. You know, when we finish with this planting, they're going to be looking out at trees. So I'm not necessarily saying that we're going to be making their life better in all respects, but I am telling you that, you know, we have worked hard to try to mitigate any conceivable impact on the K Building, and we think we've done a pretty good job of that. So finally, you know, before I introduce Ron Mueller, I just want to emphasize one last time that the numbers that you're going to hear from Ron, the numbers that are incorporated in our traffic report, the traffic volumes, are all based on extremely conservative assumptions. In fact, TEC, the city's peer reviewer, characterized these assumptions, you know, as conservative worst-case assumptions. And let me tell you quickly in what respects we consider them to be conservative. First of all, you know, we feel that more of the traffic volume will actually be on 128 rather than on local roads. But for the purposes of our report, we assumed more on local roads because we wanted to test our assumptions and make sure that, again, even in the worst case, we understood the potential impact on the locals. Secondly, when we estimated future traffic, you know, we used the ITE standards for a shopping center. But in fact, we know what some of the specific uses are going to be in the small building. There's small specialty stores, and, you know, if we actually estimate traffic based on the specific uses that we anticipate, we actually come up with traffic volumes that are 20 percent smaller than the volumes that we've incorporated into our report. Moreover, again, we use the ITE pass-by factors. We think that this project in this location, the pass-by factor will be even greater than what the ITE requires that we use. I would also mention that our traffic volumes include future possible traffic to be generated by 300,000 feet of R and D and office space proposed by Cummings over on Dunham Road. Now, as you've probably heard from Cummings, that project isn't going to be actually built until they have a substantial lead tenant. They don't have one now. They don't have one in the wings. And they do these things on a long-term basis. You know, these buildings may not get built for five, seven, 10 years. Nevertheless, we've included in our numbers, you know, all of the trips and traffic volumes associated with that 300,000 feet of office. So bottom line, I mean, we are extremely confident that the actual traffic impacts, actual traffic volumes to be associated with this project will be less than modeled in our traffic report, will be less than any of the numbers that you hear from Mr. Mueller, that you see in any of these charts. And finally, I would just mention down the road that eventually, there will be a phase two of the interchange project. And whether it's in five years or seven years, I don't know, but the city is working diligently to make it happen. It's important to the city. And when phase two does come along, there will be an enormous impact on Brimble Avenue. Significant portions of the traffic on Brimble Avenue will be drawn elsewhere, most particularly, all of the traffic associated with Dunham Road and the Music Theater and all of the Cummings buildings down there will all be moved elsewhere, and other traffic volumes will be moved. So when that day comes, it's not around the corner, but when it comes, all of the traffic issues on Brimble will largely dissipate. So for all these reasons, you know, we think that our traffic numbers are very conservative, and from your perspective, are highly reliable. And I think, you know, once we hear further from our traffic consultant, and I hope that if my neighbors listen with an open mind, that they will be persuaded that the impacts here are not going to be what they fear, and that Brimble Ave --
Hey, sir, I -- you live on one of your --
Do you own it?
You're not in Ohio.
I don't hear anything, Lord. One more car, please sit down. We're out of order. Not helping with the car.
Well, as I say, I hope that the facts and the analysis, you know, will allay some of the concerns, some of the fears. We feel very confident that the impacts will not be what my neighbors fear, and that, overall, that this project, in every respect, is going to be an asset to the city, and that the traffic impacts will not be problematic. Anyway, let me introduce Ron Mueller, who's done the traffic study. He'll review the methodology assumptions and some of the numbers for you. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Ron Mueller. I guess this doesn't move. No, there we go. That's better. No, there we go. That's better. Thank you. For the record, my name is Ron Mueller. I'm principal with Ron Mueller and Associates and a registered professional traffic engineer in the Commonwealth. And what I'd like to do tonight is to present you with the facts of the traffic study. You can take these facts and make up your own minds about whether or not you think the increase in traffic is significant or whether the impact of that additional traffic is significant. But ultimately, I think what you need to do also is rely on your own consultant to tell you, from a professional engineering standpoint, whether those impacts are significant and if there are things that need to be done to mitigate those impacts. As you know, the original traffic study was based on a much larger development, over 60,000 square feet of retail space as well as a 20,000 square feet of second-floor office space. The second-floor office space has since been removed from the development plans and partly in response to comments by TEC, but also in response to a comment that was made at the first planning board meeting that I was at where I gave a brief overview of the study. It was requested that the analysis be revised to reflect the actual development. So we have since done that in the form of a response to TEC's comments, reanalyzed all of the intersections with and without the project under the current development scheme, and presented those analysis to TEC. And as I'm sure you'll hear later from TEC about their review of that analysis. So let me give you just some of the facts from the traffic study. Every traffic study is generally comprised of three basic parts. One is to establish the existing conditions, what's happening around this particular area within the study area currently, then projecting future traffic conditions, which basically says, in a seven-year design horizon, which we're required to analyze based on state standards, what are the conditions going to be like both with and without the project? And then finally, what are the impacts of the project and how do we mitigate them? This graphic shows you the study area that we have included in that traffic analysis. And as Steve mentioned earlier, it basically ranges from the intersection of Dodge Street and Enon Street to the north, Dodge and Laurel at this location, down to Dunham Road intersection, there's 128 interchange ramps, the Connector Road at both Sawyer Road and Brimble Avenue, and heading south down to Herrick Street and continuing further south down to Colon Street and Essex Street intersection. It's quite a large study area, and as Steve mentioned before, it was done at the request of the city planner to make sure that we cover all of the impacts that this project might have. We perform traffic counts at each one of these locations during the morning peak from 7:00 or 9:00 a.m. and the afternoon peak from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The point of those counts is to establish what traffic conditions are like during commuter rush hours. And we also studied or conducted traffic counts on a Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to cover the time period when a shopping center typically generates the greatest volume of traffic. So we sort of cover all bases by analyzing traffic impacts during commuter rush hour as well as the time period when the project will generate the greatest volume of traffic. We've also done a complete inventory of each of these locations, from traffic control to geometrics and lane widths, all of which is used in the analysis of these intersections and determining what the impacts of the project are. We've also performed thorough accident analysis over a three-year period, covering the most recent three years of available data. That information showed us that all of these locations, with the exception of one, fell below the state average. And what I mean by that is, number of accidents only tells you a part of the picture. You really have to compare it to the volume of traffic through each intersection to determine the significance. And what the state has done is they've come up with statewide average accident rates. And if an intersection falls above that rate, there could be a safety concern, which would then warrant further investigation. The only intersection that exceeded that statewide average was the intersection of Sawyer Road and the Connector Road. That particular location had an average of four accidents per year. And as you know, the state and the city have an improvement project to upgrade and completely change the traffic control at that location, which we'll get into a little bit later. But these actions, we expect, will solve the accident concerns at that location. We've also performed speed studies on all three roadways, Sawyer Road, Connector Road, and Brimble Avenue. Those speed information, that speed information was then used to establish what the minimum sight line requirements are, because at each of the driveways, we need to make sure that there is adequate line of sight for exiting vehicles to see incoming traffic. And what we found, based on those speeds and those requirements, which, again, are set forth by the state, that all driveway locations exceed the requirements. The next step in the process, then, is to analyze each of these intersections under existing conditions, again, using the peak hour count data, which is then one hour between 7:00 and 9:00, one hour between 4:00 and 6:00 on a weekday, and one hour between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on a Saturday, basically establishing how these intersections operate today. What that information tells us is that when a Dodge Street intersection operates at acceptable levels today, referred to as a level of service B. Now, I'm sure you're all familiar with levels of service, but for the benefit of the public, levels of service are basically defined into levels A through F, not to be confused with the grades that your children may get in school. It's a completely different thing. Generally, for peak hour operations, level A, B, C is considered a very desirable level. C and D is considered an acceptable level during peak hour operations. And level E and F is then going into the unacceptable level, meaning you have some pretty long delays for motorists. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's unsafe. It simply means longer delays than most people are willing to accept. Dodge Street and Laurel Street is a problem location today. It is calculated F level of service, very long delays on the Laurel Street, F level, correct, very long delays on the Laurel Street approach, but it's predominantly a result of the train crossing that is right there between that intersection and the Enon Street Dunham Road and Brimble Avenue intersection currently operates at a C level, acceptable delays. The southbound ramp, also C level during the PM and Saturday conditions, but an F level actually during the morning peak because heavy volume of traffic coming in the morning to the industrial areas in town. The, no big surprise, both of the Connector Road intersections with Brimble Avenue and Sawyer Road currently operate at an F level of service. Very difficult to make left turns from the Connector Road onto these streets. That's a good idea. Herrick Street is another location that we studied. Similar situation there, F level of service during the morning and afternoon peaks. Difficult to make a left turn from Herrick onto Brimble Avenue. Saturday volumes are significantly lower coming out of Herrick Street, so it actually operates at a C level on a Saturday. The Colon Street and Brimble Avenue intersection, very similar, operates at an F level, morning and afternoon peaks on a weekday, and at a D level, which is an acceptable level, on a Saturday. And then the Brimble Avenue and Essex Street intersection, essentially, there's a very heavy volume of right-turning traffic from Brimble Avenue onto Essex Street, very few left-turning vehicles making that movement because you do have the ability to make left turns via the Colon Street intersection. But there are, but all it takes is one or two left-turning vehicles to basically block right-turning traffic, so the entire approach on Brimble Avenue is calculated at an F level with long delays during all three peak hours. So that establishes what is happening out here today. The next step, like I said, is establishing what the future conditions are going to be like within a seven-year design horizon, both with and without the project. So in order to get to or estimate what traffic will be in the future, we've done a number of things. The first is, based on central transportation planning staff, traffic projections for the region as a whole, they estimate that population will grow at approximately 0.5% per year, actually quite a little bit less than that, but we've assumed, for the purpose of the study, a half a percent per year growth rate over seven years. In addition to that, cell signaling, since the traffic counts were performed, has added 100 employees to their operation, so we've included those. And then, as Steve mentioned before, there are two Cummings projects on Dunham Road. One is 48 Dunham Road, which is about 145,000 square feet of office and R and D, and the second is 52 Dunham Road, which is another 143,000 square feet of office and research and development space. So we've taken the traffic from all three of these projects, as well as the half a percent per year growth rate, added that on to these streets in the traffic study to develop what we refer to as a no-build condition. No-build meaning seven-year design horizon, traffic projections, but without the project. The other factor that comes into play with the future traffic conditions obviously is the MassDOT and City of Beverly interchange improvement project for Exit 19. And I'm not going to go through and explain to you exactly what those improvements are unless you have specific questions about that. I think everyone by now is familiar with the major improvements there, which include adding roundabouts at the two ends of the Connector Road, one at Sawyer Road, one at Brimble Avenue, an improvement at the southbound ramp intersection with Brimble Avenue, which includes the ability to make a left turn from the ramp in its two-stage process. And then the third thing is adding a traffic signal at the intersection of Herrick Street and Brimble Avenue. So you have these improvement projects that are planned by the city and MassDOT. In addition to that, Cummings Project has agreed to make some improvements to offset their impacts, and those include a widening of Dunham Road to provide two approach lanes to Brimble Avenue. And they've also agreed, should the need arise in the future, to fund the cost of installing a traffic signal, both at Dunham Road and at the southbound ramp intersection. Now, as far as the adding in, so that basically establishes the no-build conditions. To establish the build conditions, which is with the development project in place, we estimate traffic, we distribute that traffic, and then, again, we analyze what the impacts of that additional traffic are. As Steve had mentioned before, we use what's referred to the Institute of Transportation Engineers to develop how much, or to establish how much traffic a particular land use will generate. And what we've done for this particular project is use both supermarket trip generation rates, which are substantially higher than shopping center traffic. We've also used shopping center trip rates for the remainder of the development. So we have about 35,000 square feet of supermarket, and we have about 31,000 square feet of shopping center, remaining shopping center space. That produces a conservative estimate on traffic generation because if you assume the individual uses that are being planned for the remainder of the shopping center, the 31,000 square feet, it would actually result in, as Steve said, about a 20% reduction in traffic generation. But, again, because we tried to test the roadway system, because we want to be conservative and make sure that we cover our bases in case there is some fluctuation in that traffic generation, we went with the higher numbers, also numbers that were recommended by TEC. Also, as recommended by TEC, we used a lower pass-by rate, even though, as Steve mentioned, the likelihood of this particular location having a greater pass-by percentage, being so close to 128, is very real. So let me just give you some numbers here, again, because I just want to draw out the facts of this project and of the traffic study. Morning peak hour is the lowest traffic generation period for retail establishment. I think it doesn't take anybody by surprise. But essentially, during the morning peak, the whole project would add 120 new trips to the surrounding, the adjacent streets. During the afternoon peak, it would add 370 new trips to the surrounding streets. And during the Saturday peak, because Saturdays is when shopping centers generate the most amount of traffic, it would add 548 new trips to the surrounding streets. So then, the next step is to distribute that traffic to determine really what the impacts This graphic right here shows you, it might be a little difficult to read here, but our estimate of where this traffic will go. To the north, north of 128, where we estimate about 15% of the traffic on Brimble Avenue, which ends up at the Laurel and Dodge Street intersection, 5% heading, coming to and from Dodge Street, and the other 10% on Enon Street to and from the north. On 128, we expect about 30% of the traffic from the west or south, however you want to refer to 128, and about 15% from the east. Sawyer Road, we expect about 15% of the traffic. And Brimble Avenue, we'll see the remainder, to the south, will see the remainder with about 25% of the traffic south of the project, 5% to and from Herrick Street, 5% to and from Colon Street, which ends up at Essex Street at this location, and 15% to and from the south on Essex Street. Now, that distribution, as I'm sure you'll hear from your own consultant as well, has been thoroughly reviewed by TEC. They've done a complete gravity model to assess, from a slightly different perspective, where traffic will come from, and it's actually almost identical to the numbers that you see here. They actually are projecting slightly more traffic to and from 128 than these numbers assume. But again, we're trying to be conservative, and by conservative, I mean, what is the greatest impact on local roads? Now, with regard to access to the site, you see the three curb cuts that are being proposed, one on Brimble Avenue, one on the Connector Road, and the one on Sawyer Road. As Steve mentioned before, the Sawyer Road access has been introduced as something relatively new, at least since the original traffic study was prepared. It did not assume that. But in response to comments that we got from MassDOT as well as TEC, we decided that access on Sawyer Road would further reduce the impacts of this project. Without the Sawyer Road access, all of that traffic, that 30% that we show exiting here, would have to come out on the Connector Road and then basically make a U-turn around the Brimble Avenue roundabout and then go through the Sawyer Road roundabout. So we're unnecessarily sending traffic through these two roundabouts when we really don't have to, where we can send them through just one roundabout to make their turns either to Sawyer Road or north to 128. Similarly, entering traffic without this access, that traffic would also have to go through the Sawyer Road roundabout and then enter via the Connector Road, whereas having the driver on Sawyer Road allows these people to come right in without even going through any roundabouts. So it makes a lot of sense. It distributes the traffic over three different locations. It minimizes the impacts of the project on the two roundabouts and provides the greatest amount of capacity for the various traffic movements through this area. I should point out that the Sawyer Road roundabout is proposed to be a right-in only and a right-out only. No left turns allowed, no left turns in, and no left turns out. And the reason for that is to, again, minimize the impact of traffic. Left turn movements, especially left turns out, cause a lot of delays, cause the potential for accidents, so we try to minimize those movements to the greatest extent that we can. Similarly, the Connector Road, right in and right out. And on Brimble Avenue, also very similar, right in and right out, but we do also propose to allow left turns in, because, again, why would we want to send 25% of the traffic that's entering through two roundabouts to be able to access the site? The MassDOT improvement project proposes to provide a left turn lane in this direction for access into this project. So we make use of that left turn lane and allow a safe access through providing a left turn lane specific for that movement, so they'll be out of the way of through traffic, they will not impede through traffic, and they will be able to wait for a gap in traffic to make their turn. So after we generated traffic for this project, we distributed... So after we generated traffic for this project, we distributed the traffic based on the numbers I just gave you. Again, let me give you some quick numbers on what the increase in traffic will be on the various roads. On Brimble Avenue, south, just south of the site right here, you would have, and I'm going to skip the morning peak, because, again, the morning numbers are very, very small. The more critical ones are the P M peak and the Saturday peak. So on Brimble Ave, to and from the south, you would have an increase of 74 trips, that's total of both directions, and on the Saturday, about 110 trips. To put that in perspective, as Steve mentioned before, 110 trips, that's total of both directions, is less than two cars per minute added to Brimble Avenue. Would be less than that on a P M peak. To the north, and that on Brimble Avenue, and that would be north of the 128 interchange, we would see 54 additional trips in the P M and 82 additional trips on a Saturday. And similar numbers on Sawyer Road, 86 trips on a P M and 82 trips on a Saturday. Those are the real numbers. Those are the numbers that, as I'm sure you'll hear from T E C, they've concurred with. So those are the impacts of the project. With regard to level of service. With regard to level of service, no change in level of service at the northern intersections of Enon Street and Dodge Street, or Dodge Street at Laurel Street. Enon Street will continue to operate at a desirable level B, and Laurel Avenue, Laurel Street will continue to operate at an F level of service. You add more traffic, it's not going to get better, obviously. At the Dunham Road intersection, will operate at acceptable levels, both in the morning peak and on Saturday peak, at D and C level of service, and at an E level of service during the P M peak, because that's when you have roughly 300,000 square feet of additional development, all coming out during the P M peak hour. But as I mentioned before, Cummings has agreed to fund the cost of a signal, if and when that signal is needed at that intersection, and if it is installed, that intersection would operate at much better levels of service. The numbers I'm giving you do not assume signal installation. At the southbound ramps, still acceptable levels of service on a P M and Saturday, and still at an F level of service in the morning. But again, these numbers do not assume the signal that could be installed by Cummings at some point in the future. And again, the need for that signal will be determined by the city. Both of the Connector Road intersections with Sawyer Road and with Brimble Avenue would actually improve significantly to an A level of service under future volume projections, both with and without the project. The project has, with this access configuration, very minimal impact on the operations of those locations. Vehicle queuing between the two roundabouts will be well within the storage capacities being provided under the MassDOT interchange project. Similarly, with Herrick Street, with the installation of the traffic signal, we expect levels A to B levels during all three peak hours. And, no big surprise, Brimble and Colton, and Colton and Essex, I'm sorry, Essex and Brimble also will continue to operate at an F level of service, because they do so under current conditions. All three side driveways would operate at levels B to C. Especially considering that, with the exception of left turns into the site from Brimble Avenue, every other movement is a right turn movement, which is why you achieve these really good levels of service. So, how do we mitigate the three real locations that are projected to operate at poor levels, or, actually, let me reiterate, that currently operate at poor level of service? There will be, as I mentioned, additional growth from strictly population growth, from Cummings Development Projects, from the cell signaling employees, and from this development project, that will all add to these existing problem locations. So what I've done is, I've looked into some measures that could be implemented to alleviate those conditions. At the Brimble Ave and Colton Street intersection, installing a traffic signal at that location would certainly solve the problems at that intersection, in fact, would allow level of service B to C operations, very desirable levels for peak hours. At the Brimble Ave and Essex Street intersection, a widening of Brimble Avenue to provide separate left and right turn lanes on its approach to Essex Street would solve that problem, because currently, the right turn volume, which is very significant, is being blocked by a few left turning vehicles, and as a result of that, the whole approach operates at an F level. If we provide a two-lane approach, that right turn volume can operate at a C level of service. And then, at the Dodge Street and Laurel Street intersection, currently, you have Laurel Street under stop sign control and Dodge Street under free-flow control. As I'm sure you're all aware, the intersection was signalized at some point back in the mid 2000s, in an effort to mitigate or improve traffic operations there. That signal was subsequently taken out in 2007, because it was found that it was causing more problems than it was solving. So I'm not recommending that we go back to looking into signal control there. But one of the things that could be done there is to put in two-way stop control. You leave the stop sign on Laurel Street, and you also add a stop sign on Dodge Street You'll hear from T E C that they are not entirely in favor of that change, and I think mostly because they are afraid that it may reduce the volume of traffic that reaches the 1A and Dodge Street intersection, the signalized intersection, so that if you don't have a constant stream of traffic approaching that signal, it will call for less green time on that approach than what that approach really needs. Because if you let them approach with certain gaps in traffic, then the signal may, in fact, what's referred to as gap out. Every car that goes over the loop detector on the road extends the green time until it reaches its maximum. If there's too much of a gap between cars, it will actually turn red before all of the demand is processed. So one way to address that situation is to increase the extension time, increase the amount of time that Dodge Street would still get at the signal to accommodate that change. What we've agreed to do is to work with the city and coming up with a way to further investigate that. As Steve mentioned earlier, we are not, we haven't ironed out the complete mitigation package for this project yet, but that is one of the things that we're looking into doing. And again, whether we implement that, or whether we contribute towards that on a fair share basis, those are all things that we will still need to work out. Similarly, at these two southern intersections, Colton Street and at Essex Street, we're working with the Parking and Traffic Commission and with the city planning staff to come up with a way that we can mitigate our impacts at that location on a fair share basis. So, in summary, the facts that I've provided you today include not only the information that's presented in the original traffic study, but all of the work that we've done over the last couple of months in responding to T E C's review and their comments, and the additional information we've provided to T E C, which they have completed their review of as well. They had quite a number of comments on the original traffic study, but essentially, they comprised the four major areas. One had to do with the traffic growth assumptions, the other had to do with the trip generation assumptions, the third had to do with the methodology that we used in analyzing the impacts of the project, and the last is on mitigation regarding fair share contributions. But I will let Ms. Rebecca Brown from T E C give you an overview of her review, unless you have specific questions of me at this time. Okay.
We're going to hold off on our questioning at the planning board desk here until Rebecca Brown has had a chance to talk, and then we'll ask both of you to stand by for our questions.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm kind of recovering from a cold, so if you can't hear me, just let me know. For the record, my name is Rebecca Brown. I'm here from T E C. We're located in Lawrence, Massachusetts, and we did conduct a, we did conduct a peer review of the original traffic study that was prepared by Ron Mueller and Associates, as well as the site plans to review site circulation and access into the site, and subsequent response to comments from both the, from both Ron Mueller and Associates, and from the site engineer, Alan and Major Associates. To cover just a few of the items that were related to the site circulation, which I think that Steve actually already went over a number of those comments pretty well, but just to go over a few of those comments that we had related to site circulation. So the original plan that we looked at had proposed a right-in, right-out access onto the Connector Road, and a right-in, right-out, and a left-in via Brimble Avenue. Subsequent to that review, one of the things that we had identified as being an issue in the original traffic study is that it was showing that as you were approaching the roundabout that is proposed here at Brimble Avenue and the Connector Road, that the queue there was extending all the way back into the Sawyer Road Roundabout under build conditions. So that's with the development traffic and with the projections into the seven-year design horizon. So as Ron had already discussed, they had looked at adding a secondary access and egress out onto Sawyer Street, which would, in turn, distribute the traffic more evenly on those roadways, and pull a great deal of traffic away from that proposed roundabout at the Brimble Avenue and Connector Road intersection. In addition, their updated traffic study looked at a number of different other developments, which would be other projects that are going on in the area, as compared to the original traffic study. So the original traffic study included all of the other development traffic that was considered by MassDOT when they were designing the two roundabouts at either end of the Connector Road. So that study really was prepared to provide for long-term growth in the area. So there was a total of approximately 1,400 employees that were considered to be added for cell signaling, and for the hospital, and for some other developments in the area that would add a substantial amount of growth through this area. And all of that was included within the original traffic study that Ron Mueller and Associates had prepared. So when you look at the two traffic studies, the original one that they did, and the one that was in response to our comments, you'll see some pretty significant differences there in the analysis of the two roundabouts, and that is highly related to those 1,400 employees that they had previously shown, traveling through this area that generated a lot of traffic. In addition, it is because they are now proposing to have this secondary access and egress point out onto Sawyer Road, which we really see as being a substantial benefit in getting some additional traffic out of the Connector Road and Brimble Avenue intersection. So those are really the changes that they've made to access to the site. As far as circulation through the site, they had previously shown that right here in this area, up at the top of the Whole Foods Market, that this was proposed to be two-way traffic flow, which along the back of the building is one-way traffic flow headed to the north. And so that two-way traffic flow really dead-ended in this area, and didn't give any opportunity for a vehicle to turn around. So they have revised that now and made that one-way all the way through. They've added do-not-enter signs at this end to clearly demonstrate that that is a one-way traffic flow, so that someone won't become trapped in that area. In addition, as they did already note, they did add the sidewalk access down from Sawyer Road into the front parcel of the building. They've also added stop line here as you're approaching in from Sawyer Road that was not previously proposed, so that as traffic is coming in off of Sawyer Road, it will have to stop at this location here and yield to traffic that is coming along this main access aisle. They also added in access to the service area here, which is to be used for recycling and trash for buildings B and C. So they added in access to that service area as well. One of the other changes that they made is that, we had noted that the parking that was provided on the site was far in excess of what was required from the town zoning ordinances. So they have actually provided some areas of banked parking, which includes this section right here, along Brimble Avenue, where they're showing, I believe it's 10 parking spaces that they're banking for potential future construction, if those are determined to be needed. In that same area, they had, they previously mentioned that the drive-through aisle previously did not have a bypass area, so that if someone were to enter into the drive-through, they would essentially be trapped in there until they were able to get out if they wanted to. So they have added a bypass area, which also provides additional room for emergency vehicle access around the building as well. So they have provided a bypass for those two drive-through lanes. They also did provide crosswalks to provide pedestrian access to the front of the bank as well from those parking spaces in that area. The one remaining comment that has not yet been addressed on the site plan that we had was for the couple of parking spaces that are located right here, where those vehicles backing in and out of those parking spaces would be backing into where traffic is exiting the drive-through. So we had recommended that those couple of parking spaces be removed, so that someone isn't backing into the drive-through as three lanes are potentially trying to come out of the drive-through. We did have a comment related to the drive-through access, where the three lanes that are coming out all come out into a single stop line, where you could potentially have two cars queuing next to each other that may want to go different directions, where there may be the potential for the collision. They did respond to that by noting that although there are three lanes coming out, one of those is really for the bypass, so it's, it will very rarely be used. And for the other two lanes, they will only be serviced by one teller. So it's unlikely that there'll be cars coming out of both lanes simultaneously. So we did agree that that is fine for that access with the three lanes coming out in that area, but we would still recommend that those couple of parking spaces right here be removed. And the last comment that we had that they have addressed as well was for access into the site from Brimble Avenue, where their truck-turning templates were previously showing that a truck turning in at that driveway would clip the scored island that they had shown in the middle of the driveway. So they have modified that driveway slightly, so that it will not need to cross over that island as a vehicle enters. So as I mentioned, we did review the traffic study, as well as Ron Mueller's responses to our traffic study. What we did find with the original traffic study is that it was extremely conservative in the numbers that they had originally applied, and that was part of the reason why we saw the long queues at the two roundabouts located immediately adjacent to the site. Their original traffic study had included those significant other development projects that I previously mentioned, but it had also included the 20,000 square feet of office space on the site, which has since been removed. So they did do an update of their traffic study, which removed those other developments to provide a more realistic representation of what the traffic would be like under opening year conditions, or under a seven-year design horizon, based on projects that are tangible and have been formally, formally applied to the city. In addition, they did update their site-generated trip analysis to remove that 20,000 square feet of retail space, or, excuse me, of office space that was previously proposed. In their trip generation estimates that they did, they did provide a comparison to what realistically they anticipated to be generated by the project, based on the tenants that are known for the site, and, which did show approximately a 12... that are known for the site, which did show approximately a 20% reduction from using Land Use Code 820, which is a shopping center, a general shopping center. So it did show that there was about a 20% reduction. However, all of the analysis that they included within the traffic study was based on the Land Use Code 820, the shopping center. So they have used very conservative assumptions, both for other development traffic and for their own site-generated trips within their analysis. As Ron also mentioned, TEC did prepare a gravity model that looked at the population of the surrounding communities and typical travel characteristics for how people would get to and from the site from each of those surrounding communities, taking into account competing opportunities for other Whole Foods or other grocery stores in the area or similar retail within the area, and adjusting for those factors. What we found is that the trip distribution characteristics from our gravity model were very similar to Ron Mueller's, and in fact, were within 2% to 4% in each direction. And ours were, as Ron already alluded to, were slightly higher for traffic on 128. So their assumptions in terms of the volume of traffic on local roads also is conservative compared to what our analysis was showing. Based on all of these factors, where they were really showing impacts was at three locations that Ron had already discussed. So at the two roundabout, whoops, sorry. Actually, a second there. So at the two roundabout locations, at Brimble Avenue and at Sawyer Road, as I already mentioned, MassDOT did take into account, when they did their design of those two roundabouts, a number of other projects, one of which included this project, as well as significant growth from other developments in the area. As a result of that, the analysis shows that there's more than adequate capacity at those two roundabouts to accommodate the traffic generated by this project. So the three locations where there really are an impact from the project are down at the intersection of Colon Street and Brimble Avenue, where that intersection today is already operating at poor levels of service, and certainly, any traffic that you add when you're at a level of service F already, traffic delay becomes sort of an exponential curve at that point, so a small amount of traffic can make a very large difference. The other location is down at Essex Street and Brimble Avenue, where, as Ron mentioned, just one or two left turns at that location can back up traffic, because it takes so long for a left turner to be able to get out onto Essex Street, that it can result in long delays there. As Ron Mueller had already mentioned, a couple of improvements that could be implemented at those two locations would be to install a traffic signal at the intersection of Colon Street and Brimble Avenue. The need for that traffic signal is already there today. It certainly is warranted based on the existing traffic volumes, and with the additional traffic generated by this project, that warranting condition will become even higher. So we had recommended that because that really is an improvement that is needed today, that the applicant provide a fair share contribution towards the installation of a traffic signal at that location. And when I say a fair share contribution, what that essentially would be is that the cost of that signal, we had estimated, would be in the range of about $150,000 to $170,000 to construct. Now, that included a 25% contingency to account for the design of that intersection as well. So based on that $150,000 to $170,000 that it would take to construct that, this project is estimated to increase traffic through that intersection by about 7%. So when we apply a 7% to that $170,000 cost for the intersection, their fair share of that would be approximately 7% of the $150,000. So I believe it worked out to be about $17,000, that the fair share contribution for that intersection was. So similarly, we had looked down at the Essex Street intersection, where, again, there are already improvements that are needed at that intersection. It's already operating at a poor level of service, and certainly adding any traffic through that intersection will exacerbate that situation. So we had recommended that they also provide a fair share contribution towards the installation of an additional lane coming off of Brimble Avenue and onto Essex Street, where they had discussed providing separate left- and right-turn lanes. At that location, we were estimating about $120,000 to $150,000 for improvements at that location. And again, that included the same contingency to account for the design costs as well. And based on their impact, it was about a 10% impact on the southbound approach of Brimble Avenue, so the one that would actually require the additional lane. So they had proposed providing about a $16,000 fair share contribution towards improvements at that intersection. And both of those, we had agreed in our most recent comment letter, were appropriate fair share contributions, based on the level of impact that this project would have on those locations. The other area where there really is an impact is up at the Dodge Street and Laurel Street intersection to the north. And as Ron mentioned, really, the issue with that intersection is the railroad track that is immediately adjacent to it, that whenever a train comes through there and the gates come down, it stops traffic in both directions for an extended period of time and causes long delays in both Dodge Street and Laurel Street. And when those gates go back up, it can take a long time for the traffic to finally clear out. In addition to that, though, there are some inefficiencies with that intersection because of the existing striping and signing that's in place. If you're approaching from Dodge Street, headed towards Enon Street, you'll notice that there is what looks to be a stop line striped on the roadway, and that's actually a marking for the railroad track itself. But many people become confused as they're approaching and don't really understand that that's not supposed to be a stop line. In addition, traffic that's coming up Laurel Street sees that stop line and thinks that people need to stop there, too. In addition, there is a sign there for the railroad track, that as you're coming up from Laurel Street, it appears to be a stop sign. So it looks like that traffic is supposed to stop when you see the line and you see the sign next to each other. So it can be confusing, too, and result in a little bit of additional delay, because drivers are unaware, particularly for drivers who are not familiar with the area, of who's supposed to have the right-of-way at that location. So providing the two-way stop to stop traffic that's headed westbound on Dodge Street and traffic that's headed northbound on Laurel Street may actually improve that by reinforcing what the traffic control actually is. But one of our issues, which I think Ron actually explained very well, was a concern that if everyone who is headed westbound towards Enon Street is required to stop, it will extend the gaps that occur between traffic, which, when that happens, right now, the signal at Dodge and Enon Street is set so that it's looking at the gaps in traffic, and as long as there's traffic still approaching from Dodge Street, it will extend the green time on Dodge Street until the traffic clears out, or until it reaches its maximum amount of green time that's allotted. If all the vehicles are required to stop, it will create longer gaps in traffic and may result in the traffic turning red before all the traffic is actually able to clear through on that approach, which could result in actually longer delays in the end. As Ron mentioned, that can be adjusted, but will require some coordination with MassDOT as well, as Route 1A is under their jurisdiction. But that could be an option, to look at implementing the stop control on those two approaches, adjusting the signal timing at Enon Street and Laurel Street, and then monitoring the intersection following, to ensure that it actually is operating at a better condition than what was previously, how it was previously operating. So these were essentially our findings, that their traffic analysis was extremely conservative in what they were showing. There was really three main areas that required mitigation. Two of those, as I mentioned, at Brimble and Colon Street and Brimble and Essex Street, they have offered to provide a fair share contribution towards improvements, which we believe is reasonable, based on the level of impact that they're showing that they will have at those two locations. And I think that the intersection of Dodge Street and Laurel Street needs some further consideration to potentially try this improvement that they have recommended, and monitor those improvements following implementation, to see how well those operate. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time, unless you'd like to open it up to public.
Thank you. Thank you. Ron, perhaps you want to try Rebecca up there? I'm going to open it up for the next 10 minutes or so. We'll see how long we go to members of the planning board. So anyone who has a question, Mr. Mack?
I have a question for you, Rebecca. Is there any area or issue on which you fundamentally disagree with RMA's analysis, where you significantly depart in how you view the impact of the proposed development? Or is it on the margins, if you will?
Sure. So with their initial traffic study that they had prepared, we did have some significant discrepancies in our opinion of the impacts versus theirs, where they were suggesting that there was very limited impact at the two roundabout intersections. As I mentioned, the original study was showing that there was long queues from the Brimble Avenue roundabout that would back up through the Sawyer Road intersection, which we noted, because their analysis was showing very good operations at Sawyer Road, it wasn't taking into account the fact that queues could extend back through. The analysis also showed that on Brimble Avenue headed southbound towards that Connector Road roundabout, that there would also be very long queues during the AM peak period, actually, which wasn't related to their site traffic, but to existing traffic on the roadway. So we had noted those as being very problematic and asked them to take another look at those. When they did the updated analysis, though, that both removed the 20,000 square feet of development for the office that had previously been proposed, as well as looking at more realistic traffic volumes for a future year condition, based on projects that are actually tangible and actually proposed, removing those 1,400 employees, that what we found was that the queues were much, much shorter at those intersections. Part of that, too, was related to adding in the Sawyer Road access. So by adding in that Sawyer Road access, it distributed the traffic much more evenly and removed a lot of traffic from that Brimble Avenue roundabout, in order to reduce the queues on all approaches through that roundabout. So that was the main difference that we had initially with their analysis. Right from the beginning, they had previously not recommended mitigation at the Brimble Avenue and Colon Street and Brimble Avenue and Essex Street intersections. They had mentioned the potential need for a signal there and the need for an additional lane at Essex Street, but not offered any mitigation at that time. So we recommended that, at a minimum, they provide the fair share contribution, which they did actually calculate, and we do agree with the amount based on the volume of traffic that they would be adding through the intersection.
Can I add a little follow-up? So as of today, is there any significant issue that you have with the applicant's traffic study?
No. We do agree with all of the methodology that they used to calculate the numbers in their study and with what the results of the traffic study are showing. The only one issue that remains really outstanding is for the Dodge Street and Laurel Street intersection, and how to handle that, because there are obviously still some concerns with whether or not that mitigation option will work. But because of what's actually involved is very limited to implement those improvements, there is that opportunity to implement them, monitor the improvements, and see if it's really working, and adjust the signal timings if it's not, to make that work a little bit better.
Is that, though, as to the Dodge Street, that's a problem that exists today irrespective of whether there's a development here?
That is absolutely correct. So it is an existing problem today, and will continue to be a problem regardless of whether or not this development moves forward.
And one final question.
Actually, I want to jump in here. My understanding is that Parking and Traffic has not finalized their recommendations, too. So there are a couple of things that are still being discussed. So I think these folks have gone as far as they can go tonight, but we need some more information from Parking and Traffic. Mr. Matts?
Am I on now? No, sorry about that. James Matts. Question for the proponent, RMA, I guess, right? Is it RMA?
Correct.
Right. Traffic engineer representing the proponent. So just so I have my ducks in a row here, because traffic engineering is not my thing, yeah. So a lot of numbers, a lot of things going over my head and around my head, admittedly. So am I to understand that 25% of all traffic entering the site will be coming up Brimble Ave from Colon and Essex Street intersections?
That is correct.
Okay, that's not an overstatement, okay. And just again, so I have the numbers. How many additional trips during peak times over and beyond what we're seeing now? This is just coming up Brimble Ave from Colon and Essex Street intersections?
It would be a minimal amount during the morning peak. During the afternoon peak, we're calculating 74 trips, that's total of both directions.
Both directions.
And during the peak hour, so it'd be less than that during other hours of the day. And on the Saturday, peak hour, 110 trips, total of both directions. Traffic, no. Mr. Jim, and I don't know if you'd like me to answer that question.
I didn't hear the question, but go ahead.
How many per day was the question?
I'm sorry?
How many per day was the question?
Go ahead.
Traffic analysis is not based on daily traffic. It is based on peak hour traffic. So that is what we analyze.
Any other questions from?
I'm sorry, if I may have, just a follow-up, then. I think that's important is, so what are you envisioning so far as a queue for backup there for cars waiting to take a left-hand turn during these peak hours? Is it five, 10, 20 cars in line, waiting to turn left?
Turning left into the site?
Yep.
The volume of traffic, the queue length is a function of how many gaps there are in traffic. And based on the volume of traffic that we're projecting going south on Brimble Avenue, and the volume of left turns into the site, that queue will be approximately one vehicle on average.
One?
One vehicle, that's correct.
Okay.
Keep in mind, traffic is going now through a roundabout, is going to be moving at a rather slow rate of speed, and the availability of gaps for that movement are pretty significant, much better than you see out there today. So it's always difficult to imagine what it's going to be like in the future, when what you see out there today is entirely different.
May I ask just one question, Mr. Jim, for TEC?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. One for TEC. This is to do, my question is to do with traffic coming down Sawyer Road, which equally concerns me. So my question, I guess, is a queuing question that I don't think I've heard the answer to. And I'm really trying to be respectful and address the concerns of the butter, because their driveway is, you know, within whatever X feet of that proposed entrance from Sawyer. I won't get too much into my concerns about people coming down, off of 128, going halfway around the roundabout, headed around the back part of Building A, and all of a sudden catching themselves, like, oops, and either making A and a legal left-hand turn, or having to do a U-E in the butter property. Those are my concerns. But my question for you is, what are the considerations that have been given for queuing for taking that right-hand turn during any peak hours? Because the concern is, the queuing starts, people can't get in and out of that property. So what's, any consideration given for that?
Yeah, so as far as the queuing that's taking the right-hand turn into the driveway there, so that is a free-flowing movement into the driveway. And, yes, so this one shows it a little bit. So it's a free-flowing movement coming in, and it remains free-flow all the way up through until you get to the front of the Whole Foods. until you get to the front of the Whole Foods Market. So, there's unlikely to be an extensive queue coming in there because it is free-flow. There is no conflict as vehicles are coming in to the site until they get to this point. And there's more than adequate storage here to accommodate the queue of cars that are coming in. It's only about 15% of the total traffic coming into the site that would be coming in from Sawyer Road. So, we don't anticipate that there will be a queue. Traffic will certainly be slowing as it makes that right-hand turn. But there is about, I think it's 80 to 100 feet separating the, is it 100? 100 feet? Yeah, 100 feet separating this driveway from the Northridge driveway, which is more than adequate to accommodate that little bit of slowing of traffic and may actually help to ease traffic flow coming out of their driveway as traffic's slowing down. In terms of cars coming out of the site, they will be further to the north, so those vehicles will not be passing by the traffic that's trying to exit the Northridge. They'll all be coming out further to the north and headed up. Because it is a right turn out only, they'll all be headed up towards the roundabout.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Anyone else? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. It's good to have an assistant. Ms. Brown, I understand that your numbers agree with Mueller's numbers by, within 2% to 4%, is that correct overall?
Yeah, that's, those numbers were related to the distribution of traffic, so the direction of where traffic is coming from.
Okay. And did you feel that the intersections at Brimble and Colon and Brimble and Essex, would you recommend lights there in a no build scenario?
Yeah, so the intersection of Brimble at Colon, that one does warrant a traffic signal even without the proposed development. So, certainly, a traffic signal could be installed today at that location. As far as the Essex Street and Brimble Avenue intersection, that one does not warrant a traffic signal. Part of that is the left turn traffic volume there is very, very minimal. The reason that you do see Level of Service F is because the through traffic on Essex Street is so high that it makes it very difficult for someone to make that left-hand turn. And because there's only a single lane, when someone is stopped there waiting to turn left, it backs up all the right-turning traffic. Typically, right-turning traffic is at least discounted and oftentimes excluded when you're doing a signal warrant analysis. So, the left turn volume there does not meet the warrants for a traffic signal, and therefore you would typically look at other alternatives first, one of which would be installing a separate lane to get those left turners out of the right-turning traffic and allow the right turn to operate more free-flowing.
Okay, thank you. And as far as level of traffic, I understand that both roundabouts would be Level A in both, both a no build and a build scenario? Both will be Level A?
Correct. Yeah, for overall operations. Correct.
Thank you.
And Ms. Suttsens?
Mr. Mueller, I'm looking at your Table 5R in your Level of Service Analysis Summary. And if we're looking at the Brimble Avenue at Essex Road intersection, and forgive me, I'm directionally challenged, northbound all, is that coming from Essex Street heading up Brimble Avenue?
No, that is actually that retail driveway that's across from Brimble Ave. It's actually a four-way intersection, because there's a retail, a small strip retail plaza.
Strip mall, yep.
Exactly. So, that northbound movement that you're seeing there is that driveway to that strip mall.
It's just that driveway?
It's just that driveway.
And that explains the 511 second delay?
Correct.
It seems to me that the, and I'm interested in whether or not you concur, that this has the greatest impact on both, the proposed project has the greatest impact on Brimble Avenue at Essex and Brimble Avenue at Colon?
Correct. And only by virtue of that, we expect about 25% of the traffic to head on Brimble Ave to the south.
And when you're talking about the number of cars that make the left turn at Brimble and Essex, again, forgive me, being directionally challenged, are you talking about coming from Brimble Avenue, making the left onto Essex Street?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you do a count? Because there are some cars, but I travel that all the time, and there doesn't seem to be that many. And if that car on the left side is far enough over, the cars on the right can pass by?
If they really hug the center line or that median, that's the.
But is there an actual, do you have an actual count as?
Yes, we do. I mean, I can give you the numbers. It's two vehicles making a left turn in the morning, eight vehicles making a left turn in the afternoon, and six vehicles making a left turn on a Saturday. And again, the reason why those volumes are so low is because most people would use, would choose to use Colon Street if they want to make a turn onto Essex Street in that direction. It's actually shorter.
And did you do any analysis as to the level of service change that would result by putting the traffic light in at Brimble Avenue and Colon?
Yes. That level would be a Level B to C during the peak hours.
B to C from peak hours?
Correct.
And now it runs from D to F?
Correct.
Or C to F? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mack?
I just had one follow-up question. Can you explain, and this could be for either or both of you, in as layman, in as layman terms as possible, how you both arrived at the distribution numbers to say, okay, 25% is going to go on Brimble, X percent's going to go on 128? How did, how do you come up with that? And if it's based on sort of standard data from the state, you know, based on like, you know, land use codes, who sets those and how frequently do they get amended?
Well, the distribution of traffic is, there's not an exact science to it. What we try to do as traffic engineers is come as close as we can to what we expect will actually happen. And there's a number of different ways that you can estimate that. What I've chosen to do is to take a look at the entire area surrounding the study area and looking at two things predominantly. One is the population in that, within that area and outlining lying areas, because after all, the people who go to a shopping center are the people that live in the area. So, that is a big factor in it. And the second part of it is really the existing distribution of traffic. How does traffic flow today and how, where are the turns being made at each of these study area intersections? Because what is happening today is a very good indicator of what's going to happen in the future as well. I'll let Rebecca explain her methodology.
So, in contrast to what Ron had looked at with how traffic is coming into that area today, what we had done was actually prepare a gravity model. And what that does is it looks at a 30-minute driving radius around the site and using US Census population information for all of those areas surrounding the site. We look at where are those population densities and how would people coming from those areas get to and from the site? And we look at that based on travel time and on distance. For the most part, factored towards travel time. The fastest way is the way that most people will travel. We also adjust that for wherever there are competing opportunities. So, there is another Whole Foods Market that is not very far away. So, we took into consideration that, and we weighted the population coming from those areas that may be actually closer to the other Whole Foods Market than to this one. And arrived, as we averaged all that information out and weighted, we arrive at a percent distribution based on where the population is, how people will get there, and whether there are other opportunities for them to travel to instead.
Thank you. I think at this point, not to foreclose other questions from the planning board, I'd like to get the members of the public up so we can hear their concerns and questions. So, I'm going to ask you two to stand by, because I think if there are questions, they're going to be answered by you two. And we have a sheet here with approximately 43 names on it. And as I mentioned earlier, I don't intend to close this off tonight, so if you don't get your chance, we'll continue this at a later date. However, I'd like to ask people to start coming up in the order in which they signed. And keep in mind, there are plenty of people behind you who also want to talk. So, we have Ellen Morrison. There's Ellen Morrison here. Is that right? All right, we're going to go down in the order in which Sheila Dion, 47 Brimble Avenue. Okay. Donald Dion, same. Rosemary Broadbent, Northridge. Please come up to the microphone. And following Rosemary will be Christopher Chirco of Corning Street. If you want to be on deck.
John, excuse me, John. Am I correct that this project will only go forward if the interchange is redesigned?
That's what Mr. Cohen has said.
I'm Rosemary Broadbent. I live at 109 Northridge Road. And I want to talk about the new access road onto Sawyer Road. But I'd like to clarify a couple of things about Northridge first. A couple of the assessments have referred to it as a rental community, an apartment community, and that's really not what it is. Northridge was cooperatively built by the Archdiocese and the Massachusetts Housing Finance Authority to try to meet the need for low and moderate income families. And so, it was completed in 1975. All the units at that point were townhouses with two stories. And it became obvious that anybody who had any movement disability could not live in a two-story townhouse. So, several years later, the K Building was built. It was kind of squoze into a corner there, as you can see. It's not, and we had to get a waiver for the corner of the building, which is close to the property line. That is one-story, one-bedroom, handicapped accessible apartments. It's all, you know, it's got the handles and the wide doors and ramps and that kind of When we've been, I've been in meetings and conversations with Mr. Cohen since he presented his first, the design for his first plaza. I don't even know how long ago that was. 2009? And so, you know, because of, then that kind of slept for a while, but then the new plan started coming up. And we've had a lot of conversations, and I think that we made it really clear, several of us made it really clear, how important it was to us to protect the integrity of the K Building. Because the people in that building don't have a whole lot of choice about where they're going to live. They have small apartments, they have small patios, they have small decks, and the property line, and I'll give you some pictures, is about two feet from the corner, the front corner of the building. And because of the angle of the building, two sides of the building will be facing that new road, which will be 10 feet from the property line. Now, that does not give them a whole lot of space, even if there is a wall there. I don't know whether, you know, you would want a wall 10 feet off your patio, because what they see now are trees on all sides. Mr. Cohen also said that he really understood our concern, and he just wanted to be a good neighbor. And that's not what this street looks like, especially since we've made it so clear that we wanted to be, we wanted that building to have some protection. The first design I saw, I wondered about, because it's the C Building, and it's very, very close to our property line. My understanding from reading the zoning laws is that it needs a 25-foot leeway between a building and a property line.
Well, we can get an answer on that. Do you know the answer to that, Leah? The setback, is it 20 or 25 feet?
I have the zoning laws if you need them.
20 feet.
20?
20 feet.
And it's also very, it's also a very unstable area of the landfill. The other thing I want to say is that Northridge is not built on a landfill. The landfill part is the field, where the residences are, are rising rocky land. And if you want to find out, try to dig a garden up there. It's very rocky. And it's, and you can see, if you check elevation, you can see that the buildings rise off the landfill. It's rocky, and it's not on the landfill, is on our field, which is rapidly sinking. The sudden appearance of the new road on the K Building was really alarming, because we'd had plans and plans and plans and never had seen this road, especially since it's, as I said, it's two feet from the, from the property line, the building is. So, now, when I talked to Mr. Cohen at the last meeting, there was, the buffer was just going to be open space. And I'm glad he reconsidered that and is willing to put a buffer up. But I'm not sure, I mean, K Building is a two-story building. I'm not sure how. I don't know what the trucks, what trucks are going to be using it, and I certainly, I'm sure that construction trucks will be using it. I also want to say that the North Beverly Plaza, where Shaw's is, gets along fine with one entrance and exit. They have one rear unmarked road that goes out to Tozer Road, which most of the people don't even know about. But otherwise, there is one, there is one access road with lots of lights and so on, but, you know, people seem to manage it pretty well. On Sawyer Road, what traffic there is moves pretty quickly. There's the North Shore Education Consortium, which has about 20 buses and taxis, et cetera, because it brings children from all over the county. And when they're delivering the kids and when they're taking the kids home, that is, that's very congested. And of course, you have to watch out for, you have to give space to the, the school buses. The, because Sawyer Road is on a hill, you really do not get the distance of sight that you would think. And I have a photograph here that I would like to show you. Also, on that, on Sawyer Road already, on the other side from Northridge, there are four driveways, one of which is for the Beverly Athletic Club, the North Shore Consortium, and a building, and a business that is not being used right now. One for soccer, et cetera, one for the roller palace, and one wide driveway that serves two electronic buildings. And that driveway is directly opposite where the new road would be. But again, my biggest, my biggest concern, and I really don't know if any amount of buffing will take away our worry, is the fact that there doesn't seem to be any way to protect K Building and to leave them with the, make it so that they have the use of their patios and their, and their decks, because right now, they don't. And I also want to say that we understand that Mr. Cohen is entitled to make as much money as he can, but we're also entitled, as the only director of butters and the only residential of butters, to draw a line when we think that our quality of life is going to be seriously damaged.
Thank you. Would Rick Mooney?
Questions?
Come on deck, please. No, the next speaker, please.
I have to say one more thing. I have to say one more thing, by the way. The distance between the site of the new road and the northern entrance, the northern driveway to Northridge, is maybe 50 feet at the most. So, you may have free-flowing traffic turning right into the plaza, but there's no guarantee that they are going to continue to flow once they get into the plaza, if there's that much traffic. So, it's not hard to imagine that there could be a one- or two- or three-yard queue, which will really be, have to require quick action for people coming north.
Couple of things.
Couple things. First of all, oh, I'm sorry, Chris Chirco from, I live on Corning Street in Beverly. Couple things. First of all, as someone who came here from Corning Street and had to cross Essex to get here tonight, I'm really not looking forward to another 15 percent of traffic, especially when the train goes by, which is what happened tonight. And also, some of the numbers I'm going to talk about are based on daily figures, because that's what's been widely reported in, on the Salem News and other articles that we've seen, so. As a fourth-generation Beverly resident, raising a fifth generation here, my family and I have seen the progress that the city has made over the years. Much, if not most, of that progress has been positive. However, along with the positive growth, some of the development has had a negative effect in the city and on the, and on the North Beverly neighborhoods specifically, such as the development of 1A. And I can't help but think that this project is going to make that situation much worse. For anyone who's driven up Brimble Ave towards North Beverly and arrived at Dodge Street and Laurel, train crossing by nicks, when the train is there knows what I'm talking about. How can adding any more traffic to this area make this situation better? I'm picturing backups.
Excuse me a second. We're not going to have an applause meter here tonight, so there's no point in your applauding. We know you're, we know you don't want this. So let's have the speaker speak, and you can have your turn. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry. I'm picturing backups from that intersection all the way to 128 when a train is crossing, and I don't think that's far-fetched. Short of building a tunnel under the tracks at that intersection or a bridge over them, I think this, that this situation is a real possibility to have traffic backed up like that. According to a traffic study commissioned by Mr. Cohen himself, should this permit be granted, the neighborhood around the development will see an increase of about 4,200 vehicles per day during the week. This is a neighborhood with two elementary schools within a mile or so of this development and a high school right down the street. With all due respect to the people at CEA, these are schools that they don't have to worry about bringing their children to. This neighborhood will also see an approximate increase of a staggering 6,400 vehicles per day during the weekend days. Again, with all due respect to the folks at CEA, they will not have to deal with this traffic to get to their homes or in and out of their driveways. The studies are nice, but what, what does common sense tell you that adding this much traffic to this area will do? While I support CEA's right to develop their property, I do not support a plan that is flawed and will have an irreversible adverse effect, not only on this neighborhood, but several of the surrounding neighborhoods as well. Whether it's new traffic backups in the Montserrat neighborhood, increased gridlock on 128 South during the afternoon rush, or more people now using Exit 18 to avoid the Brimble Ave exit, and increasing traffic in Centerville, allowing this permit will affect a large portion of the city. I ask the planning committee to remember that it's your job to make a responsible decision that will not adversely affect the quality of life of the residents of this neighborhood and Beverly as a whole. On behalf of my family and my neighbors, please do not issue this special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. I've heard a lot of, Rick Mooney, 282 Dodge. Excuse me, just one second. Go ahead, Ellen.
Rebecca or Mr. Muller, can you respond to the gentleman's claim of 4,200 cars per day and 6,400 cars during the weekend or Saturday? Please.
Certainly. Those numbers are the volume of traffic generated by the project on a daily basis. I think you heard me say earlier before that traffic analysis is not based on daily traffic conditions, it's based on focusing what the operations are during the peak one hour of traffic. And we've chosen to analyze the impacts during the morning peak, the afternoon peak, and a weekend peak hour. So while the daily traffic generation numbers are correct, they really have no relevance in the traffic study?
Well, I guess that's for us to decide, but on the, on the numbers themselves, are those accurate numbers?
Yes.
They're from your study. And are those, just so I understand, are those numbers total trips or total trips on local roads?
No, those are total trips in and out of the development.
Including 128?
Including 128 from all directions of traffic, and their total of both entering and exiting. So if you're talking 4,200 on a daily basis, that means 2,100 entering and the same 2,100 vehicles exiting. So it's really 2,100 cars that the project is generating, it's just that each car makes
Two trips.
Two trips.
Okay. Rebecca, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I was going to make the same point that Ron made, that those are really trips and not cars. So a trip is one vehicle entering or one vehicle exiting. So the number of additional cars that the project would generate is actually half of that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is that Rick Mooney? Okay, our next speaker after that is Frank Giacalone, if you want to get ready.
I'm Rick Mooney, I live at 282 Dodge Street. For 17 years, I've driven through that intersection at the railroad tracks twice a day, minimum. I can tell you, no stop sign, no lights, nothing is going to improve that. Unless you depress the train tracks and pave over it, nothing's going to change. So why do we put this project through that's going to do nothing but exacerbate a traffic situation that's already dangerous? And what I think first of is response time for the police, the fire, the ambulance. I'm not getting any younger. So in all the track, the traffic talk I've heard, I haven't heard anybody talk about response time for first responders.
Thank you.
Can anyone address that?
Well, I can tell you that if you talk about response time through the existing 128 interchange area, given the levels of service at the connector road intersections with Brimble Avenue and with Sawyer Road, and the tremendous delays incurred by vehicles going through those intersections today, I would imagine that response time would be drastically reduced with the implementation of the Mass DOT improvement project, going from an F level of service to an A level of service, drastically reducing those delays.
Thank you. The next thing I think about is the Mass DOT putting a connector road. Oh, I'm sorry. The next, the next thing that comes to my mind is the connector road, okay, the two rotaries. And I would, if, if this project has to go through, which I hope it does not, I hope we could have that connector road in place and see how that works before you even think about recommending a curb cut in that thing. And I'd also like the, the driveway near Northridge not there at all. I know that doesn't leave any options, so let's not do the project. Not everything in Beverly has to be developed. So that, that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Giacalone? Judy Montane? Pass? 84 Northridge Road. I can't make out the name, I'm sorry. All right. And similarly for 2 Auburn Road. Is there someone from 2 Auburn Road who wants to speak? All right, Jeffrey Allman, 11 Stewart Lane, Beverly. Karen and John Hodgson, 14 Laurel Street. Dan DeAngelis, I know you're there, Dan. Okay.
Hi, Dan DeAngelis, 207 Brimble Ave. I do have a, not too lengthy list of comments I'd just like to go through, but I just want to raise one issue. I know it's been said that the total trips really didn't matter. Every traffic study we've seen on this project includes total trips per day. So if it doesn't matter, it shouldn't be on these studies. These are the numbers that we've been making available to the residents, so they get a general sense of the impact this project is going to have, not just on those few hours of the day that, that the peak hour numbers focus on, but the impact on the daily traffic, especially when you consider Saturday, because there's really no peak hour on Saturday, let's face it. We know that folks shop from nine in the morning till six or seven at night. So I think that's an important number, and it's important that people get a sense of that. The numbers that we've seen to this point have been really watered down to the impact on the intersections that are frankly a mile away. And the real impact for, for folks that live here aren't just the folks that live a some distance away, but for those folks that use Brimble Ave on a daily basis. There are going to be significant increases in traffic as a result of that. One thing that was pointed out just briefly with respect to the site review, some mention was made of the concern about some parking spaces near the bank and the concern about cars that were going to back in and out, and the impact that would have on the flow of traffic. Nothing has been said about the fact that there are parking spaces to the left of the, sorry, to the south of the A Building, where it meets with the proposed Sawyer access road. And those parking spaces there would also require folks to back in and out, having an impact on at least the traffic trying to exit the plaza at that location, and certainly some impact on the traffic as well that's trying to get in. So I don't think that had been addressed by TEC. I suspect that would have a greater impact than any traffic that's circling the bank, and it's something that the parking and traffic is for certain should be aware of if they choose to go along with that particular entrance as an alternative. I'm here to express my concerns over the CEA group's proposal for the commercial development of the parcel located at 140 Brimble Ave, and their request for a special permit, which would allow for a grocery store and retail shops at a location that's currently zoned I R industrial research. I urge you to deny the applicant's request for this permit, since the proposed retail development would cause undue traffic, nuisance, and many unreasonable hazards, as we've heard tonight. When this project was first proposed, the primary concerns of the North Beverly Neighborhood Association and the residents of Northbridge Homes were the environmental impact of the former landfill, and the traffic generated by this destination grocery store, and how each would affect the quality of their lives. For more than 18 months, the process of researching the studies, reports, and submissions surrounding this project has been a significant one. We appreciate the continuation, attention of this board towards this parcel and the access of documents that have been made available through the planning department to keep the residents informed, especially given the constantly evolving circumstances. The results of the proponent's own traffic study, audited by the city's peer review, TEC, who we've heard from tonight, confirm there'll be a dramatic increase in traffic, not just to the immediate area which surrounds the parcel, but to those neighborhood streets that will be directly impacted by the majority of trips coming to and from the proposed development. As evidence of the extent to which the proposal will impact traffic patterns, the city's peer review has recommended that the proponent offer remediation from one end of Dodge Street and Eon to Essex and Colon Street. In September of 2013, when the planning board first was asked to consider the I R overlay for this particular parcel that was included in the land swap, Rod Emery from Jacob Engineering stated that the proposed retail development that was on the table at that time would generate 305 new vehicle trips per PM peak hour. And on Saturdays, nearly 4,500 new vehicle trips would result. However, a more recent study prepared by CEA Group by Ron Mueller anticipates 408 vehicles per peak PM hour generated by the shopping center. On Saturday, that number swells to 573 new vehicle trips per peak hour. These numbers still assume a high bypass rate for a specialty grocer such as Whole Foods. The TEC numbers, these calculations, really only change that number by, as, as our record said, only 4 percent. So that number's still pretty high. And as I said, because this is a specialty grocer, I feel that that pass-by number is not accurate, given the type of folks that are likely to be shopping here, or from where they're going to be coming from. On a given weekday, area residents will face 6,400 total vehicle trips, and on Saturdays, over 9,400 trips on the length of Brimble Ave. These numbers, again, prepared by the proponent's own traffic consultant, assume that nearly 50 percent of the vehicles represent cars that are already on the road. TEC has suggested that that percentage of bypass trips was higher than industry standard, and that number's been revised as a result. The newest revision reduces the percentage of bypass trips, but introduces a new analysis that had not been previously offered in any traffic study of this development. And that's the suggestion that 20 percent of the vehicles visiting this shopping center will be visiting more than one establishment. Again, the city's peer review took issue with that impact, stating that they do not concur with the application of a blanket 20 percent multi-use trip credit, given that more than 60 percent of the site trips will be going to the grocery store. And that would require that the balance of 33 percent of the trips to the other use would have to be shared with the grocery store, from all of the other stores. The volume of traffic expected as a result of this development is a great concern for nearby residents. However, equally troubling is the impact noted in the trip distribution analysis of the vehicles that would frequent this development. Again, in September of 2013, in the course of the deliberations over the proposed land swap, the Jacob study was repeatedly quoted as evidence that only 10 percent of the traffic going to the shopping center would travel on Brimble Ave on a daily basis. On numerous instances, this number was quoted in public, on video, and in print, as a way to assuage the concerns of the residents who felt that the parcel was not suitable for a retail development. Residents did not need to worry that there would be a significant increase in traffic, since 90 percent of the vehicles would travel to and from by way of 128 and the off-ramps. Since then, we've learned that 10 percent was a gross underestimation, underestimation of the impact of the traffic from this commercial development on Brimble Ave. The new trip distribution analysis by ARMA and confirmed by the city's peer confirms that 55 percent of the traffic will rely on Brimble Ave and surrounding neighborhood streets to access the center. Because of the configuration of Phase 1, all but 15 percent of the, of the vehicles entering this plaza will have to travel on Brimble Ave to, to either enter or exit the plaza, to find their way home. And again, this is Brimble Ave, a street that folks rely on to pick their children up at the two elementary schools, as has been said, whether they need to go to an appointment at Beverly Hospital, et cetera, all of these will add to the constant traffic that is already on Brimble Ave. The degree to which the entire neighborhoods that we've talked about will be impacted is best illustrated by the fact that the peer review has recommended remediation over a mile east and west of the parcel. The 15 percent of shoppers traveling points north and west will reduce the level of service at the Eon and Dodge Street. No viable fix has yet been proposed for that. However, the increased traffic from the development will hasten the need for a solution. The combined 20 percent of shoppers from the east and south will reduce the level of service at Brimble and Colon and Essex Street as well. TEC has proposed, as they've said, a road widening and the addition of a signal. Each example serves as proof of the broad impact of this development in addition to the immediate surroundings of the parcel. The cost of these upgrades should not be placed on the taxpayers of Beverly for the benefit of the proponent. The city's Mass Works grant has already essentially provided total access for the Brimble Ave development. To date, the developer and the city have not agreed on what amount the proponent will offer to mitigate the traffic on those neighborhood streets. Whatever net benefit in review of the project provides the city will be more than offset by the sacrifice of quality life for North Beverly, Montserrat, and Northridge residents for the benefit of out-of-town shoppers. In addition, to this point, DOT has not granted access to the connector road for the plaza. The proponent has requested that the Parking and Traffic Commission sign off on that prior to getting that. And while I understand that's a lengthy process, it would be unfortunate if the city gave their impromptu of this project only to learn that DOT has agreed to something that is now suddenly out of their control. So I would urge you not to support that until you have the state's okay on that connector road. And for the reasons that have already been stated, the greatest concern about that is the impact that's likely to have on the backup of traffic. I'm almost done, I probably. In addition to the reduction of the sight lines, any connector road curb cut would mean that 75 percent of the traffic entering or exiting the plaza would hinder the, the flow of the existing traffic that's always there. This would obviously be problematic during the morning and evening commute, with the addition of area commuters, those thousand additional workers that we hear about at the Cummings Development. In addition, since the music theater traffic is considered a special, special event, there's been little consideration of the impact it would have on the commuter, on the connector road when 700 to 800 vehicles enter the Sawyer and Brimble Ave rotaries. Without the benefit of a traffic officer in place, there will be no device in place to remove the traffic swiftly and to avoid backups under 128. Since the city has been denied the resources to study Phase 2 in the most recent round of Mass Works funding, there's no real solution to Brimble Ave traffic in the foreseeable future. Mass DOT does not have Phase 2 construction scheduled to at least 2024. Given budgetary concerns on the state and local level, it's not unrealistic to assume that area residents will be faced with an increasing traffic burden for years to come as a result. Finally, in recognition of the impact that this proposed shopping center would have on its neighbors, and the city's desire for increased revenues, the planning board should reject the proponent's current proposal and instead join with area residents and the developer to find a balance that is best suited to serve all parties involved. I respectfully thank, I respectfully ask you to deny the issuance of a special permit at this time, and instead engage the community and the developer in finding a solution that would have a less adverse impact on the area traffic while preserving the quality of life for all of our residents. Thank you again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Are you going to, Mr. DeAngelis, are you able to submit those comments in writing?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. They went kind of fast.
I would have, I would have prepared a written statement, but I anticipated there'd be something new this evening, I didn't want them to be my final comments.
So if you'd email them to the staff?
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Louis Bourgeois, I live in 91 at, I've got a lot of things on my mind. I am very concerned about the children in the neighborhoods up in North Beverly, and I don't think a lot of these I don't think a lot of these people are aware of what's going on in Walnut Ave., Oakmont Street, up through the neighborhoods where the school is. And I've already witnessed my own pet getting killed, and I've witnessed a girl almost getting hit on a bicycle. I witnessed my neighbor's granddaughter almost get hit by a car. And I called the Beverly Police on this, and they have not responded to any of it. So my concern is the traffic going towards an uphill train crossing. It seems like this has not been resolved for twenty-eight years, as long as I have lived in Walnut Avenue. And I don't see adding more traffic to Brimble Avenue that's going to help this matter. I personally think the Phase Two project, which is down the road, should be completed before anything happens here on Brimble Avenue, and I think that's going to help traffic with Dunham Road, which we still don't have, Cummins, the full effect of his traffic, never mind the success of the Music Theater, which I think is great for the community. And yes, I do get stuck in the traffic from the Music Theater, but I think someday that might be resolved with the interchange. So I think in lieu of creating more traffic here, our focus is trying to get the state to raise some money to do the Phase Two and proceed with that project before we even think about adding traffic to this area. I just don't know whether, you know, I'm just looking for representation for the North Beverly citizens. I don't see it on the planning board. There's one member on this board, I believe, that lives in North Beverly, it's over on the Conan Street side. Only if you live in North Beverly, you feel the effect of what's happening down there. You know, and I don't, I do travel over to the Cove area, my favorite store's up there, a little convenience store, and, but it's just, it's a shame, you know, I just don't know where the representation is here. The Beverly Police Department's not responding to our needs. The planning board, I wish they could see what's happening. You know, come sit at my front porch someday and just watch it happen, you know. I have neighbors that are concerned. We've got a lot of young children in the neighborhood now. We have schools. We have a Hannah School on one end, we've got North Beverly Elementary School, and I just wish there was some resolve to this, and I don't see this going in the right direction for what the developer wants. It's the wrong thing to add this grocery store to this neighborhood. And nothing against Whole Foods. I know they're a wonderful store. I've seen them everywhere. I worked in Cambridge there. I see the store over there, and it's great for the Harvard community. But unfortunately, Whole Foods isn't great for our neighborhood because of what it brings in traffic. So I just wish you people would do the right thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Rogan, 15 Walnut Avenue. Next will be Pam DeAngelis.
Mike Rogan, 15 Walnut Avenue. Mr. Mueller, I wonder if you could put your diagram of Laurel and Brimble Avenue, the one you had, no, before that, maybe, no, a couple before, let's see, when I see it, that one, yeah, I don't know, pretty far away. Well, that's the one you had for, I gotta get closer. On this diagram, okay, that's, thank you. On this diagram, you show Brimble Avenue going over 128 and continuing. Now, you have Dunham Road there, but you've conveniently left out Oakmont and Walnut Street. And at, Brimble Avenue ends at Walnut. The road curves, I don't know if you're familiar, if any of you've gone up to Nick's Rose Beef. Right at that intersection, Budley starts, and Budley goes up to the corner. Laurel comes in from the right. Now Laurel starts way over in Oakmont, it goes through the Coast Guard housing, intersects with Walnut, and then continues down, it meets Budley, and then continues down to Dodge Street. Now, there's a stop sign at Laurel and Dodge. No one stops for that. No one stops for the stop sign at Budley and Laurel. They just blow right through it. So signage is not the answer. They're not, they're not doing it. So I don't know what else you can do. I've gone to the police department, tried enforcement, and that doesn't seem to work. But what happens is whenever the traffic backs up, and it usually backs right at Walnut, at the end of Budley, they tries to bypass that, go down Walnut, over to Putnam or Laurel to think they're going to save some time, and they go at high rates of speed, and I'm talking fifty miles an hour. And I've followed these people just to see a lot of them live in Hamilton, Wenham, and even Essex. They're not Beverly residents. They're just blowing through. Or another time is if there's a traffic accident, could be way over in Peabody, and it backs up traffic on 128, and everybody gets off at Brimble Avenue, and it backs up sometimes for two or three hours, and they come flying down our road. There's going to be a death there. And, you know, adding a Whole Foods is not going to help anything. And the people that are going to go to Whole Foods are most likely going to go to Hamilton when nobody else, the average working person can't afford to go there. They're high-priced. Another thing I'd like to say is up on Sawyer Road, where the North Shore Consortium is, now that's a school for handicap kids. They just leased the building that's between their present building and the ice skating rink. It's some manufacturing company that went out of business. Now they're moving their other two schools, which are presently down at the Memorial School, their alternative high school, and also at the McCowen School. Both of those schools are going up there. So there's going to be an increase of teachers there, buses, and they even have hospitals. I mean, ambulances bringing some of the kids. I know my wife's a teacher up there. And, you know, these experts you have have not even discussed the extra, that extra traffic. And another thing that I'd like to say is all your engineers and stuff, they all live out of town. We're still voters, we're taxpayers, and we're residents. They are not. And we're going to be around for a long time. Once this project's done, you'll never see them again. So if you have any concerns, you know, we're going to be left with a mess. So I just hope the board considers that. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela DeAngelis. And next up will be Bert and Ellen Eisen from 58 Putnam.
Hi. I'd actually like to reserve my comments till, is that better?
Yeah.
I'd like to reserve my comments for next week if I could, but I do have a question. You may have just addressed this, that the presentation tonight has been based on the idea that there is, would be a curb cut on the connector road, and this explanation has been based on that. So if there is not a curb cut as of yet, would I understand therefore that the Sawyer Road in and out would become much more impactful for the Northridge residents? Would that become the primary in and out?
I think I heard Mr. Cohen say that if the curb cut is not approved, they're going to have to come back here for another review entirely.
That is what he said.
Because that would change the whole characteristics of the site.
All right. And then, thank you very much. And then otherwise, just a brief comment, the stop sign that I think you've been talking about at the end of Laurel Street, where Laurel and Dodge's Row meet, there used, actually there used to be a stop sign there, coming down, and the other one at Laurel. So for whatever reason, they felt that that, apparently whoever the powers be, had felt that that was not working properly to let the traffic flow. So that's when that sign from that coming down Dodge's Row was removed and was briefly replaced by an overhead light. And then that was removed so that there is just the one stop sign left. So, I mean, I don't, if it didn't work when there was even less traffic, I don't know that that would be your best solution for solving that, that intersection problem.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
The residents of 58 Putnam to Eisen? No? Matt St. Hilaire. Thank you, Matt. Rosemary Maglio, 30 Pleasant Street. Rosemary, you want to wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
First comment would be.
You have to come to the mic if you want to speak.
Rosemary Maglio, 30 Pleasant Street. I'd rather wait till, till other people speak, but, but there is, it has been brought out about the way the trucks, you know, the eighteen-wheel or the big trucks are going to be delivering to the site, and, and it looks like all the traffic is going to be going by the trucks behind the Whole Foods store, which that road abuts the K Building and, and the Northridge. So it looks like all those lights and all that traffic. And I know at Commodore Plaza, people on Sargent Street, or that street right next to there, had a problem with, with delivery trucks. Those trucks just idling at night. So there's problems with that, too. So I just wanted to mention that. And then the lights and all that traffic will be going, and the headlights would be impacting the neighbors.
Thank you. That's a good question. I wanted to ask Ron that myself. How, how do you see truck traffic and passenger vehicles interacting in that portion of the site?
Whole Foods delivery trucks would enter the site from Brimble Avenue into the driveway at this location, travel adjacent to the store, to the back of the store, and then back into the loading areas. When they exit, they exit at this location and then make a right turn out onto the connector road.
So the parking spaces behind?
These parking spaces here would be, I know that was a comment earlier, those would be employees for Whole Foods, so there would be no activity of those parking spaces, certainly not during.
Including the ones on the back?
Including the ones on the back, that's correct.
All right, thank you. Gary Cowles, 106, Colon Street. Okay. Towanda Taranteno, 112 Northridge. All right. Kristen Whitfield, 121. Alex Danish for Stewart Lane. And next up is Scott Ferguson.
Okay, Alex Danish for Stewart Lane, North Beverly. A lot of the questions and concerns I've had have been addressed, but there's still a few that I would propose that be answered tonight. And being an engineer, and particularly a mathematician, and quite familiar with statistics, I know how they can be and not be skewed in any, any direction. I'm not quite sure what assumptions were made for the additional traffic. We're talking about a Whole Foods store which Linfield just got, and I don't know of any others in the area, and the amount of traffic that will be generated, not just from Beverly, but from outside of Beverly, have they been taken into account? And also, what assumptions were made when the studies were made for the, for the traffic, for seasonal traffic? We all know that during holiday seasons, Thanksgiving, you're going to have a lot, a lot more people wanting to go to a, a Whole Foods. During the summer, you want to have people want to go to restaurants. And I'm not quite sure what was, what assumptions were made when these numbers were derived. I'm not a transportation forecaster. I'm not familiar with gravity models, but I am, you know, I do know common sense. And after all that, one other question I'd like to answer is, I've seen the left-hand turn at Walgreens that's quite recent, and there are more people who want to turn left than there's room for. And the people who want to go straight on 1A heading north get backed up under 128 because people are there waiting in the through lane, wanting to take a left-hand turn. Could you describe, I'd like to know what kind of distances and what studies were made to determine how long that lane should be so that there'll be no traffic backup?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mueller. Mueller, I'm sorry, do you want to address those questions?
Thank you very much.
That, that last question, related to which location?
The left-hand turn into, from Brimble Avenue.
Oh, from Brimble Avenue into the site, okay. What we, we use traffic analysis models that simulate how traffic will flow under various traffic volume conditions. And based on that model, it shows us that there will be, on average, a queue of one car waiting to make a left turn there. That is based on those traffic projections and nationally-accepted models that are used throughout the country. T E C, your own peer review consultant, has reviewed all of that information, and they've concurred with our methodology and with those results.
I'm sorry, what's the length of that, of that left turn?
The length of the turn lane proposed by D O T. is about a hundred and fifty feet, and beyond that, it turns into a center turn lane, so theoretically, there's even more space needed, there, if needed.
And that's a dedicated left turn.
It is a dedicated left turn.
It's not also a through lane, that's only for left turns.
Left turn only.
So that's somewhat different from the left, I don't know if you even know the left turn into Walgreens, but that's also a through lane.
Okay, yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
This is not, okay. And the earlier questions were methodology on taking into account seasonality of traffic in special seasons.
Obviously, during Christmas holiday shopping season, shopping centers and retail establishments tend to generate more traffic. That's not necessarily the case for a supermarket, although it can be. But certainly, retail is, does generate more traffic during the holiday shopping season. So yes, there will be more traffic at the site during the holiday season. However, when we analyze traffic, we don't analyze the worst-case scenario because it is for a very short period of time that you have those traffic conditions. And if you tried to design roads and intersections to handle those conditions, you would have a sea of pavement in the city and everywhere else to accommodate those levels, which are simply not needed during other times of the year. So that's why we don't design for that. The other question was on the distribution for Whole Foods. Again, we expect, because of the user that has been proposed, Whole Foods, that they would actually have a more regional distribution because they will draw traffic from a larger area, and what that would result in is actually more traffic coming to and from 128, not the local roads. Again, to be on, on the conservative side of things, we did not make that assumption that it is specific to Whole Foods, but rather a more common supermarket that would draw traffic from a more local area. All of that said means, in reality, we're likely going to have more traffic coming from 128 than what we've assumed in the traffic study on local roads.
Rebecca, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, a couple of things to note. So on the, the first comment about the supermarket and that generating more traffic, so a Whole Foods market does not generate any more traffic than any other grocery store. In fact, sometimes can generate less because it is more of a specialty type of store. The difference is where the traffic is coming from. So Whole Foods markets do tend to draw traffic from further away, and for that reason, may generate more traffic coming from the highway than what was actually estimated. Obviously, we assumed that a, a supermarket use would be there, so it, it may actually have more traffic coming from the highways than from local roads than what was shown in the analysis, but wouldn't generate a higher volume of traffic. In terms of the, the seasonal adjustment, Ron Mueller did already suggest that we don't design for peak traffic of the site. So we're not looking at the, we look at average traffic for site-generated trips as opposed to, you know, peak December time when, when there's holiday shopping. But in terms of adjacent street traffic, you are required to look at average month conditions. The counts that were actually collected were collected in a higher-than-average-month condition, so those numbers are a little bit conservative already because they already looked at a higher-than-average-month condition, so they were in, in a little more conservative than, than using just an average condition. And as far as the left turn, I think Ron already addressed that issue adequately, that there is, at this location as opposed to at the Walgreens, there is a designated left-turn lane. lane. And that left-turn lane accommodates six vehicles within that 150-foot storage, but in addition, it does extend back into a two-way left-turn lane that can provide some additional storage in the event during those peak months for the shopping center, if there is additional queuing beyond that one vehicle, that would occur on an average-month condition.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions.
Chairman, may I just ask one question since, thank you. Since somebody brought it up, the folks that are, would be coming from Wenham, Hamilton, Ipswich, Essex, was there any consideration given as to what route, principal route they would take? One would think obviously going to take 1A. Are they going to spin off and go Dodge to Laurel to Budley to Brimble, or stay on 1A? Thank you.
So when the gravity model was prepared, we did look at the shortest travel time to the site. So traffic that is coming in from 1A to the north, much of that traffic will come in, coming down Dodge Street and Laurel Street and down Brimble Avenue. Some of that traffic obviously can continue down 1A and come in alternative routes, but essentially, all of that traffic eventually ends up on Brimble Avenue, coming into the site at some point along that route.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, has anybody offered, you people have been sitting here for 90 minutes and you haven't even had a chance to go to the bathroom, get a drink of water, take a break, stretch your legs? I don't know how you run your committee, but do they get a chance to get a break?
No, we're a hard-working team here.
So it's the Scott Hausmann approach?
I think we can make it till 10 o'clock anyway.
I was thinking of considering you and the people in the committee. Thank you for your time, your service, and your effort, and your endurance especially. I think the only thing that comes into comparison is--
I'm sorry, you're Mr. Ferguson?
Scott Ferguson, former member of the ZBA, presently living on Brimble Ave. We had meetings that went to 1:30, but we at least gave people a break. So much has been mentioned by so many other people tonight that it's extremely difficult to not repeat things, so with all due effort. I'm the person that was at the microphone the last time you had a meeting and didn't get a chance to speak to probably the most pertinent thing to this, if you still run it the same way. I've heard 400-plus hearings, 250-plus special permits, saw the evolution of the special permit from when it was not quite clear to terribly confusing, ask any of the lawyers that had to deal with it, but special permits went around in a circle. And if they're still operating with the same criteria, it turns out that you can only address yourself to 2927C to A through F. Those are the criteria for a special permit. Is that true or not? So tonight, I can't speak to the most important of all of them, which is use, because tonight we're talking just about traffic.
You're welcome to come back next week or the week following.
Well, use can be summed up in, "Traffic first." I think the most pertinent thing was said by Dan, some emotional things said by people in that end of the project. I'm on the south end of it towards the Moncroft train station, so it's ditto on both ends. All I can do is chime in and agree with you with direct evidence, not a traffic study, not an estimation, not a computer simulation, because if you think a computer simulation works for reality, ask people that designed the Raptor program as a strike fighter. They never actually built the plane. They relied on computer simulations, and that project is five times over budget. I don't believe computer simulations. I believe direct evidence of people that live in the community. I wake up in the morning, I read the paper, I sit there on the stairs, and I watch the traffic go by. 4,200 is a conservative estimate. That's conservative. Just consider the stink and the stench and the carbon imprint, for one thing, because I smell it, I see it. The animals in the area experience it. Ask the crossing guard woman that has to deal with the amount of traffic that goes by the intersection of Palmer Road and Brimble Ave five days a week. Ask the people that wash their cars on Brimble Ave, on my end, not yours, on a Saturday morning if you've worked all week and you want to clean up your car and you see what goes by. It doesn't live there. It doesn't, it's not impacted by it, it's just simply traveling through. Those traffic things are real by direct evidence, not by some kind of numbers or something. People that live in the neighborhood are experiencing that. So when you make this decision, I guess the most pertinent thing to say to you, and I think I had to write it down so I wouldn't get emotional, the number of times that I worked on all the permits and variances, and especially administrative hearings, when things were really nasty on the zoning board about 10 years ago, the overriding decision-making thing that I made, regardless of the lawyers, regardless of the engineers, was, is this project good for the neighborhood? Yes or no? No other criteria. Is this project, not that that place cannot be developed with something else, that's a separate argument to me, but this project, this Whole Foods at that location, is that good for this neighborhood? And I think I've answered that question for you without even bothering to say so. What I ask you, from all of hearts of hearts, soul of soul, because I spoke to the people on the Common Council when they voted on this, people that I worked with for years, and I had this conversation with them directly, and we all know how they voted, we all know what direction they went. Well, we're not friends anymore, let's just leave it there. I live there. These people live there. Have you heard anybody tonight stand at this microphone that lives there, speak in favor of this project? The answer to that's obvious. I don't think I need to go on and on anymore, other than to say to you that I implore you, as a person that lives there and is directly affected by this, that this project, at this locus, at this time, is just simply wrong. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Peter Johnson. Next up will be Bill Squibb. After this gentleman.
Peter Johnson, 677 Hale Street. This is going to be quite dispassionate, and it's regardless of whether this project goes through or not. I would just observe that at the intersection of Dodge and Laurel Streets, it's been addressed several times, and I appreciated the comments about there were two stop signs there before, and they disappeared, and there was a big fiasco as the State Highway Department tried to time the lights all the way back down to 1A. So that may be why the stop signs are gone. I'm not sure we can civilize anybody, but I think if you put in a stop sign, both at Dodge Street and at Laurel Street, Laurel Street, sorry, so that they alternate it, imagine that, no one turning left on Laurel going over toward Enon can get in, because people are nose to tail going down Dodge Street. We mentioned that there's a problem with the gap in the loop, which might allow the traffic signal to change. I would just suggest that the gap will be filled by those people grateful to be able to turn left from Laurel Street onto Dodge before the next car zoops in. I would just recommend that the traffic people revisit the issue, put in a pair of stop signs there, change that loop to allow for the fact that traffic could be coming from Laurel, and you probably have that problem reduced. Certainly not removed altogether, but I think that would address that particular issue reasonably. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Squibb. Rose Cowan, 62 Northridge. Emily Belanger, 67 Brimble Avenue.
Hi. My name is Emily Belanger. I live at 67 Brimble Ave. And I just feel obligated to comment, because I will be directly impacted by this, as I live right on Brimble Ave. I've lived there for eight years now. I have three small children, one of which attends Hannah, all of which who will be attending Hannah. And so obviously, safety is my main concern. As you know, right now, the way Brimble is, the traffic is challenging at best. We walk to school when we can, but as you know, there was an incident last year at Hannah where a child was actually struck by a car, resulting in the crossing guards, which has been helpful, but I guess to hear that there's going to be such a significant increase in an area that's already so, you know, busy and, you know, with it being children in a school zone, it just really baffles me that this could be something that we would consider. And I just ask that you really think of the families that live there, that bought these houses with the goals of, you know, living in a community where we could walk to school the way I did when I grew up in Beverly. And, you know, to find out 2,000 to 4,000 additional cars or trips per day just really makes me nervous, and I just would ask that you would consider that and think of the real people that live here, who want to be Beverly residents and want to continue to, you know, see walkability and pedestrian safety. I would just ask you to consider that, and please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Johnson, 172 Brimble, to be followed by Patricia Wilson.
Hi, I'm Ron Johnson, 172 Brimble Avenue. I have lived on Brimble Avenue for a large part of my life, and I just can't believe that this project, it just to me seems to be, it's so fraught with difficulty and the negative impact on the quality of life, that I just wonder, what is in this for Beverly? It's going to negatively affect the people that live on Beverly and live, that live on Brimble Avenue and live in the neighborhood. And I just don't see, it's a project that's got a lot of problems, and I just strongly oppose it. It just, common sense seems to me to say, "Don't do this. There's no reason to do this." I'd also like to compliment Dan DeAngelis and all the hard work that he and his fellow members of the North Beverly Association have put into this project, and they really should be congratulated for the work that they did. So I just wanted to express my opposition to this, my strong opposition to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Wilson. Janice Innocente at 25 Foster Drive, left. Jeanette and Guy Something, 15 Budley. And next up will be Brittany McRae.
Hi, my name is Greg Parachak. I live at 15 Budley Avenue. That's right on the corner of Laurel and Budley. I'm the second house in from the railroad track, most dangerous spot in that area. I've lived in Beverly for 60 years, at this location for 37 years. So I'm a traffic expert, okay? You didn't have to hire anybody, you could have come by my house and asked. I've seen every telephone pole in the area hit at least once, every fence taken down, and my own son hit at the crosswalk. I strongly oppose what you're doing. In good conscience, you can't go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany McRae. Paula Hadad. Ellen Povaromo, 22 Arlington. Toby Klaus, 29 Arlington. Joe Yaffa, 23 Lakeshore Avenue. I'm sorry. Lee. And next up is Jim Fahey.
Lee Yaffa, 23 Lakeshore Avenue. All right. Couple of points. Contrary to a lot of the attendees, I am not necessarily opposed to the content of what the developer wants to bring in. However, the traffic situation is difficult. You want to call it a nightmare? Yeah, I'd agree with that. I really am up here to try and clarify some points. If you're coming off Route 128 and you're headed up to, oh, okay. Top button? Oh, that was the, let's go back to the, all right. There we go. All right, if I have this right, the connector road is here, is that correct? All right. So if you're coming off of 128 and you're hitting the roundabout, and you're going to Sawyer Road with this new suggested access, is that allowing a left turn?
No.
So how would you access the plaza from Sawyer Road, coming off of 128?
You'd go through both, you'd take, go through the roundabout, you'd take onto the connector road and in from that direction.
Okay, all right. Well, my concern is that, given the traffic, I know the roundabout's supposed to mitigate it, given the traffic that you're now injecting coming out of the plaza into traffic that's headed to the northernmost roundabout, is there any way to consider a straddle lane with a left-hand turn onto the plaza, so that the traffic coming off 128 is split right at the first roundabout onto Sawyer, for people wanting to go on Sawyer or the plaza, and the notes who want to head north to that other roundabout to either take a right on Brimble or take a left to go to the Music Theater? So I just raised that question, because, now let's shift to Brimble Avenue. If I am traveling on Brimble Avenue towards the plaza, I assume I'll be allowed a left-hand turn to access the plaza?
Yes.
All right. Is there, sorry about that. Wow, I really messed you up, didn't I? You want to adjust that? All right, so if you're allowed a left-hand turn, is there any mitigation there? Is there a roundabout at the front entry? Is there a straddle or Q lane on Brimble Avenue heading north?
Yes, there is.
All right. And he's saying only one car? The gentleman from the traffic--
Apparently, that's what the traffic study shows, but the queue can hold up to six.
All right, but the queue can hold up to six. All right.
And potentially more.
Right. Now, is there a roundabout at that front entrance?
No.
So you just would have a straddle lane with people signaling left-hand turn? Okay.
Correct.
All right. Personally, I have issues with that, because I think that's going to get difficult. All right. The other points I'd like to make is, I do agree with the traffic, permanent traffic signal that is presently needed at Brimble Ave and Cullen Streets. That's very difficult as it stands right now. I would ask for the Traffic Commission and the developer or the experts to look somewhat further when they get into Brimble Avenue meeting Essex Street. A right-hand turn only at that point would be very helpful. But now you have a situation where the people who want to go onto the plaza will now take the left-hand turn at the traffic light, trail behind the Park Island, make a U-turn, and now take a left-hand turn to go into the plaza at various stages of the day. That's not going to do much to stop the traffic backup. That's pretty much it. The other concern I have is whether or not the hours they use for the traffic study, I'd like to just be informed of how many train crossings or how many stops at the Moncro- Montserrat train station occurred during those study periods and how many train stoppings there were up at the Dodge Street Station during those study periods.
Okay, I'm going to ask Rebecca Brown. You can answer that question, please.
Do you have an answer to that?
So there are four trains that come through during the evening peak period and the AM peak period that stop at those stops.
Okay, that's valid. All right. My parting comment would be that the board look at this project as a whole, not as a Whole Foods project, but in its entirety, which I trust you will do, and that you be not be influenced by any future mitigation of a second phase project. Because there's no assurance that will occur, although, you know, there are plans for it, I assume, but I think deal with the present situation and make an appropriate judgment. Thank you.
Jim Fahey. Judy Martin, 8 Palmer Road, followed by Tony Toledo.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Judy Martin, 8 Palmer Road. I did also want to ask, I have a question I want to ask, so I'd like to hold my comments for next meeting if possible. A few meetings ago, Mr. Thompson, you had asked when we were looking at car trips and the traffic numbers as a whole, you would ask Mr. Cohen to provide something to compare to the special permit being granted numbers, meaning a build as of right now, I don't know if I'm phrasing it right, but what they could build now by right without a special permit, so we could compare apples to apples and make a good decision. And I've seen some numbers based on intersection and based on peak hours, but I haven't seen whole day number comparisons. Is that available now? Did that, was that produced?
I'm not aware that the traffic trip study was done for that. I think what was depicted was a potential development of offices on that site, but I'm not sure the traffic information came with that. Mr. Cohen, is that correct? Okay, I'm going to repeat that for those of you who couldn't hear. Mr. Cohen was saying that the traffic information that was provided was that for the office development, the theoretical as-of-right office development, there would be a greater impact on the commuter hours and less so on Saturday.
Which-
Just generally speaking with no clear-
But we're not going to have numbers where we can, we have those huge day numbers-
No numbers.
And the huge weekend numbers. And I think it would have been nice to be able to compare what he, because we know that you can build and we know that he's going to build.
Excuse me, I've been corrected.
Sorry.
So I might as well, I'll read to you what I was just handed from Mr. Miller. This is from this table.
Thank you.
Traffic volumes, the, for the North Shore Crossing, and again, I presume these bear a relationship to the current numbers, but the AM peak hour for the proposed development was 116. The as-of-right office, again, this is a 300,000 square foot buildout, was 461.
But, but we don't have whole day?
No, no, these are all, everything's done on hours.
Okay.
On the peak hour.
But, okay.
The PM peak hour, current project was 348. The as-of-right was 414. The Saturday peak hour for the current development is 518. And as Mr. Cohen mentioned, the as-of-right office would only be 129 for the Saturday.
Okay.
So higher effects on the peak hours.
Understood, and we all would expect that based on what he has the right to build now versus what a special permit would allow.
That's right.
So I just was hoping to get whole trip numbers because it's the volumes of traffic in terms of looking at undue traffic and the difference in those volumes per day that I think people would understand.
Right.
Also the weekend impact, if you look at Saturday and also Sunday, based on a permit for retail and no permit for retail is going to be very scary.
I guess I'll ask the applicant, are you in a position to provide full day numbers for the theoretical buildout?
We don't have the numbers there. We've, we've heard now, and we've heard a number of times from Mr. DeAngelis and others, that they want to focus on the daily numbers. And the daily numbers, sure, it's important, it's in the study, we're all entitled to know what that number is, but it's somewhat abstract and while people have said that they want these numbers to be meaningful, how will it actually be experienced by those who live in the neighborhood? Well, in order to translate these big daily numbers into something that's meaningful, you know, it has to be taken further. You have to break it down into an hour and then you have to distribute it, you know, in the different roads. You don't sit in one place and experience 4,000 vehicles passing before your house. It is distributed by road to the hour and that's why, you know, our traffic engineer and all traffic engineers, you know, you focus on first distributing the traffic and then focusing on the worst peak hour. So certainly, we can produce any of the number, and sure, those big numbers, 4,000, 6,000, they sound scary, and some are seeking to produce numbers that sound scary, but they're not meaningful. It's the, it's the peak hour numbers that are meaningful.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to comment, but quality of life and breathing in fumes if you live on Brimble Avenue is based on all of the cars that you're, that are driving down Brimble Avenue, not when they're driving down intermittently. A lot of that comes into play. I know that's not traffic and it's part of my other question, but my only other comment is weekends are when people on Brimble can breathe, the people who back out of their driveways to get onto Brimble Avenue, who sometimes can't get out for a very long period of time during the week because the traffic during the week is very heavy. Weekends, they can actually breathe, wash their cars. 6,500 additional new trips on a Saturday plus how many thousand more on a Sunday? Because we're not getting Sunday numbers, is a huge difference to a neighborhood. And I would just argue that, yeah, those numbers as a whole are very important to us. Thank you.
Tony Toledo, followed by Rick Marciano.
Hello, Tony Toledo, Whitney Ave. It just seems to me that the, all of the traffic stuff is smoke and mirrors to me because what people talked about with common sense and looking at it, it seems like if we have a huge thing there that draws a lot of traffic, then it's going to take that much more onto the roads and such. And it puts me in mind of the old Emerson quote where they, where he had said, "The more he proclaimed as honesty, the more I counted my spoons." So the more that I hear that there's going to be less and less traffic, the more that I feel like Brimble Ave is going to be still life with cars. So I would ask that this be denied.
Are you going to talk for more than two minutes? All right. All right.
You've been doing this a lot more than I have. I've been maybe 12 years coming to the planning board meetings and all the other meetings. Rick Marciano, 141 McKay Street. Overall, this has nothing to do with the employees that were hired, but this is the worst I've ever seen a planning board meeting go. There's never, there's no closure to this.
Oh, thank you, Rick.
Because you're going, you're going through it all. Get the state and everything approved from the state, which you're allowed to do and all that first, then come back and tell the citizens what's going on. Right now, this is so confusing for the average citizen, they don't have a clue right now. So I respectfully ask, just try to get all the answers together to help the citizens out, other than the T-word, the traffic. That's, that's a whole another, that's a nightmare and hopefully you listen to that. That's all I have.
All right, I'm going to continue this meeting till our next hearing, which is on the, remind me, the Wednesday next week is our next meeting and it starts at 7:00. Our next meeting is next week on Wednesday. Our next meeting is next, is next week at 7:00 PM. We're doing the best we can, I'm sorry. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.